Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being with us on this rainy day. At this time, I'd like to call the May 27th Board Meeting to Order. Have with me to my left, Mr. Underwood of Reading Church, Mr. Sealy of Bowling Green, I am Nancy Long of Port Roll, Mr. Clay Foreham from Madison, Mr. Floyd Thomas from Attlepana, excuse me, and Jeff Black from Western Carolina. At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Fields of Second Mount Zion Baptist Church, if you would please come forward and open us in prayer.
Thank you so much to the board. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this. Thank you so much. Oh, heavenly Father, we invoke your presence even right now. We pray for those that are on their way. Give them safe travel. We thank you for bringing us here safely. Be with this meeting, may we all be on one accord. And when it's all said and done, we'll give you praise, honor, and all the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Standing and join us pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Underwood, you let me know when you're ready. At this time, we will start with opening board comments. Mr. Black?
Yes, thank you. I just have a few. Just want to thank Mr. Sealy and Mrs. Sealy for putting on the Memorial Day event. It was a great event. Dr. Parker did an excellent job. Had an excellent speech. Duffer Hubbard, I'm sorry. Dr. Hubbard had an excellent, we were just talking about Dr. Parker. So, yeah, Dr. Hubbard had an excellent speech at the event. So, I do want to thank them for a great ceremony. Also, had an opportunity to attend graduation for the Caroline High School seniors. Obviously, every year, that's a fun event to be able to attend, to see the excitement on their faces as they move on in their lives and their path forward. So, that was a nice event to be able to be part of. So, thank you for the invite. Also, want to, I got an email today, and I don't know, Mr. Shebal, or if it's the schools, there's lots of my constituents that are using the Lotus Academy ball field behind, the fields behind where the Lotus Academy is for playing softball and baseball. And it's kind of not in great shape right now. So, I don't know whose responsibility that is to kind of cut and maintain. But it would be nice to see if that was in better shape than it currently, the current situation. And then finally, I'm going to, just want to let the board know, I'm going to add an amendment to the agenda a little bit later on. Over the weekend, hundreds and hundreds of people within Lake Landor community were drinking or facing tea-colored water coming out of their faucets. And for some people, it was 36 hours without being able to bathe, drink water, no communication whatsoever until this afternoon at 4:00 from the company in regards to what was happening at all. And I have several pictures. I was on the phone today with Office of Drinking Water. I was also on the phone with State Corporation Commission. I sent an email to the President of Aqua. I have not heard a response. So, I'd like, I'm going to add that as an amendment to the agenda. So, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
I just have, have one, short one that's not happy for me. But since our last meeting, Caroline lost a true treasure in Mrs. Pauline Boxley. Mrs. Boxley was an educator for, excuse me, I want to say 40, for 40 years, if not more. She was also a wealth of knowledge. We were doing a county program years ago, and somebody asked me about the history. And I said, "Don't ask me. You need to ask Mrs. Boxley because she knows everything." So, I just wanted to honor her again and offer prayers and condolences again to her family. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Foreham?
I'll, we'll go comments.
All right. At this time, what I would like to do is, we have something on our agenda that we're going to discuss that deals with the date of the founding of Caroline County. And I was sort of interested in how a date like that could get mixed up and why we had to research it. But this is, a citizen sent me this story trying to explain it. And I'm going to try to shorten it up a little bit here. It is, the story is an interesting one. Today, Caroline County Board of Supervisors deal with economic development, transportation issues. The county's founded on those needs as well. But the entrance to this land at one time would become Caroline County, lay south of what is today the Dawn area in the Pamunkey River Valley. It has been the national gateway for settlers to come from the north of Jamestown. By the early 1700s, the wilderness here was filled with farmers growing tobacco. Since this land lay at the head of Essex, King William and King and Queen, the farmers purchased, approached those counties for the right to build better roads, take their tobacco to be shipped at Port Roll. As you all know, that road is called Seven, Rolling Hill Road on the Rappahannock. Those counties refused to come together on an agreement to build these roads to the great detriment of the local economy. The farmers began to meet as a formal group and decided to petition the House of Urgencies for the right to form a new county. This would then create their own governing body and thus the right to build the transportation routes desperately needed. Their leader was Francis Thornton, who they elected. He took the petition to Williamsburg. In the early winter of 1727, Francis took leave of his family in Genny and headed to the capital. Although he was faithful in his duties and returned to the session again and again, the Urgencies ignored him. He wrote to his family that he would not be home for Christmas, and this is where I think we're going to lose the year. He would not be home for Christmas as his duties had not been fulfilled. Francis got a break even in these sterling times, the fractions that would bring about the American Revolution were forming. The Royalist, lawless fraction got the idea that they would agree to Thornton's petition, and they could elect a Burgess from the Royal Britain side to represent the new county. The petition was granted in the spring of 1728, and an unknown Burgess made the motion to name the county Caroline, after the New Queen of England. The roadwork began within weeks. The new county was formed. And it goes on to finish up about thanking the office for looking into this and finding out that we were definitely not 27, but 28 due to that time and change. And that the official date, we're going to have to change the number on the seal. So, if you have a picture of the seal now with the seven on it, that will be turning to an eight. So, that was the story. And I want to appreciate citizens for sending that to me to understand why we have all these years thought we were formed in 1727, but actually it was 1728. Because even back then, politics took twice as long as you thought it would take. So, I want to thank you for that letter. And that is my history for today.
I just want to thank all the folks that helped with the Memorial Day celebration. It takes many people to do that. I want to thank Dr. Hubbard for being the keynote speaker, as well as Nancy, who provided remarks for the board, and all the folks that helped. So, thanks to everybody.
Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know many of you have started receiving your tax assessments. There is a big change. But remember, there is an appeals process that's noted in your package. So, if you have a complaint or concern, please take the time to meet and go through your assessments with people in the county. Second, I received an email from Sheriff Moser. And I want you to take a good look at the number of calls they are answering. He indicated that their calls are up 47%. And I think he's only probably increased his number of deputies by a few, not many. I think we're fully staffed now. We've got two or three in training. But we are, we are growing some. And we are through fare for people traveling up and down 95. And we get a lot of people from different parts of the country, different parts of the state, who come through and have violations. So, we need to make sure that we keep our sheriff's office up to date and make sure they have all the tools they need to keep us safe. Congratulations to all our seniors who graduated this past week. My condolences to Lieutenant Curry. His mother passed. Ms. Curry drove the bus for the school system for many years. So, certainly our condolences to the family. Carmel Church Station, the number 10, the new fire station, firehouse, right now is running the second most calls in the county. So, you can see that your tax money was well spent because that firehouse is right off 95, and they are busy. They are very busy. And finally, the playground at Lomassie Park. We officially named the playground, the Thomas and Irene Fields Playground. And certainly, if you ever get a chance, if you get a chance to go by there and look at it, you go by on a Saturday, you'll see that that park is always full. There are always children, always there playing with their parents. It has become a true community center. Before we get a center there, but it is a hub that everyone is using. And again, it was, it's something that's beneficial to the community, and it looks awesome. So, just wanted to update the board on that. Go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. And I also neglected to state that I did attend the Sheriff's Award Ceremony and banquet that he hosted here. Good turnout. It was just a very nice event. So, I hope next year, when that time comes around, I know this is something new that Sheriff, Sheriff has been doing, but we need to continue to support that. So, congratulations to all those at the awards. Congratulations to whoever did the video. And we're going to have to show it one night here at the, at the meeting, just so everyone can see all the things that you all do. So, all right, that is the end of my comments. We are going to move our agenda around, as I said, a little bit. And one thing we are going to do is, one of our, I've got to find it on my agenda now, C, 3C on our agenda, is a resolution celebrating the 100th birthday of Ms. Mary Tillman Price. And we are going to not keep her here waiting until we get there. We are going to do that right now. So, Mr. Underwood, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd ask the board to, I'd make a motion that we adopt a resolution for Ms. Mary Tillman Price for 100th birthday.
Second? I take it you won't make, making the motion?
Motion, yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed? So, moved.
And with that, now I have a resolution for Ms. Mary Tillman. It's from the Board of Supervisors, and it reads as follows. "A resolution celebrating the 100th birthday of Ms. Mary Tillman Price. Whereas Ms. Mary Tillman Price was born on March, I mean, May 18, 1925, one of nine children of Margie and Deacon Louis Tillman Sr. of Caroline County. And whereas Ms. Price was born on the same day as her twin sister Ma Tillman, and was so small at her birth that she could be held in the palm of one's hand. And whereas, after being educated in Caroline County Public Schools, she married Robert H. Price in May 1950, and ultimately became the mother of eight children, grandmother of 14, great-grandmother of 35, and great-great-grandmother of 42. And whereas she worked at the Expo Tobacco Factory and the veneer plant and made curtains and cloths for many of her neighbors by using her crafting abilities. And whereas her Christian faith and her spiritual life have been always tremendously important to Ms. Price. She is a longtime faith member of Second Mount Zion Baptist Church, singing in the Victorian Memorial Choir and working as a missionary. She prayed with her children every night. While babysitting her grandchildren, she could be often observed reading the daily bread and her Bible and inspiring those around her to seek a deeper faith, deeper connection with their faith. Whereas Caroline County is delighted and proud to have citizens such as Ms. Mary Tillman Price, who have achieved much incredible, who have achieved such incredible milestones, and to celebrate their rich life stories, longevity, and all that they have contributed to Caroline County and the community. Now therefore be resolved that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby takes great pleasure in wishing Ms. Mary Tillman Price happy 100th birthday with many, many more returns. Presented this day, 25th day of May, signed by Charles Cully Jr. and Mr. Nancy Long, Chairman."
Now, we normally, we take a picture whenever we do this. We're coming down to you, okay? All right, at this time, we are going to break a little from our normal, and we are going to take a recess for a joint meeting with the school. We are going to be meeting over in another room. And we will return and, and as soon as we finish that meeting. So, we will see all those attending over in the meeting room next door. And then we will be back. Do I have a motion to recess?
Real quick, can I add one thing to that comment?
Yes.
We're going to livestream the meeting in here because there's only 20 some chairs in EOC.
Okay.
So, you can watch the meeting. It won't be any public comment anyway, whether you're in here or in there.
Okay.
And you can try to go over there, but there's only so many seats. So, it will be, it will be available in here, is what I was told. Correct. You can watch it right here on this big screen.
Right. And I think there's only a few chairs.
20, 24, I think. So, I counted them.
So, so you can sit in the comfortable chairs and watch, or do as you please. Do I have a motion to recess to the meeting?
So moved.
In a second. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? So moved. We'll be back shortly. If I can, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With the presentation. Mr. Caller of the slides? So, while they're getting slides and things together, we've come up with some thoughts, talking to one another, two on two, on things that we think might be situation solvers that we can come up with or that we feel like we can, can look at and discuss. So, we're going to go over those, and then, of course, you will have your, your plans. And we'll see where we can come together as far as getting through the next couple of year, few years until we can enlarge our facilities. So.
All right. You know, the goal is to save all the existing school buildings because at some point in time in the future, they're all going to probably be used for various and sundry other things. So, with that in mind, and for use probably by the county to be determined at a later date, one of the things that we've all talked about is moving pre-K and Head Start from Lewis and Clark and Madison Elementary to the Old Lady Smith Elementary School. The move from Lewis and Clark would actually solve a traffic problem with kids being dropped off. So, being able to actually separate that, it's in the same drive path as Lewis and Clark going to Old Lady Smith Elementary, could also solve some problems. And that building is something that the county's looked at over the years, and we have a pretty good investment in outdoor facilities there. Moving pre-K and Head Start from Bowling Green Elementary to the old Bowling Green Elementary School, which is now also the school board office. At our last meeting, we learned there were 45 administrators there, which would still be plenty of space to move about 100 or 150 kids, I forget what was actually talked about, into that building. In those moves, as temporary as they could be, the board would like to construct four to six classrooms and a gym at Bowling Green Elementary School, which would solve the longstanding gym problem and give additional space there, which is always going to be needed. In that, in that construction, we know that there's probably some money needed to actually move children to the old Bowling Green Elementary at the school board office. We'd be willing to look at what that cost would be to actually move children into that building, as well as looking at the cost at the Old Lady Smith Elementary School to move children there for pre-K and Head Start. Again, this could be temporary until we get some of the other projects completed. The other project that we've talked about is constructing 12 to 15 classrooms and a new gym using the old gym multipurpose room for cafeteria space for Madison Elementary School that would give additional space and allow a full-size gym to be put in at that facility and would also give growth on that side of the county, which would facilitate growth over there and keep children inside. The goal is to keep, we've heard parents, and I've heard plenty of them say, "We don't really want kids outside the building going back and forth between trailers." This would facilitate children being in brick-and-mortar buildings and supervised. And I think that's what I've heard from many of the parents at various events that I've been at in the last couple of weeks. We would also, the bus garages, we've all learned, is part of the, is part of the county building, or building structure or inside of the lot that we own. And we are willing to actually do a facelift on the bus garage and add space to actually facilitate 77 passenger buses and do some other maintenance there as well. Anybody else, anything?
Can we ask questions about this?
Could we present our plans first?
Well, I'd like us to finish because we've, we've heard many plans, and this is our first attempt at putting something in writing for everybody to see.
Mrs. Vaughn, can I ask a few questions if you don't mind about the plan? Or the one at the school?
Yes, Mr. Black, because I know we had trouble catching up.
Is there another slide here?
Yeah, let's, let's, is there one more slide? There's one more slide, and then, and then we'll ask questions.
Again, what we're trying to do, our plan is trying to help alleviate pre-K and Head Start, alleviate traffic issues at both Ladies, Lewis and Clark and Bowling Green Elementary. Pre-K and Head Start can always roll back to the schools once the additions are complete. It's something that we're looking at that would have a temporary effect. The goal is to have the renovations at the Lady Smith and the, and the Bowling Green Elementary complete by January 26, beginning the planning process for the new elementary school four to five years. It may be a little further out than that, just depending on enrollment and financially, how the county's positioned. The majority of the board, at this point, at least the board members that have talked- at this point, at least the board members that have talked amongst ourselves on the two oh one, don't seem to support learning college, learning cottages or trailers and would like to move forward the actual building plan that we have presented.
Yes, Mr. Black.
First of all, I want to throw out there that this plan, that whatever we put, Miss Wong did call me, Chairman Wong did call me, and I am completely, I, I had no, no part in this plan. So as member of the board supervisors, we can say that the whole board supervisor agrees with this. Maybe a majority does, but I do not. So I want to state that clear right away. Because I'm not one of those. I, I, I guess when you look at costs, I don't see, to me, and I haven't, I'm not an expert on the schools plan either, but we have an immediate need and adding space to Bowling Green or Madison, which I, I think is a good idea, does not solve an immediate need for this coming year. There's no way we can put classrooms and a gym into one of these schools within, within, you know, three months. So I, I think the idea of adding to Bowling Green, I think that's a good kind of medium plan. I, you have to have, I, I believe we have to have a new school somewhere. It's gonna have to, but there, there is an immediate need for this year and next year and the year after until, because if we start today and we all agree, which I think most of us agree that a new school needs to happen, or where, I'm not sure if we agree where it needs to happen. But even if we were to agree today, you're not getting a new school in to, with planning everything, probably for five or six years. And so there, there needs to be something for those to bridge that gap for five or six years. Some of the stuff I see with Madison and Bowling Green, I think would be helpful, but it would kind of be to me, longer term with, in addition to that new school. So that's my thinking. I don't know if anyone else wants to add to that, and I'm glad to hear with the school's presentation, but I just want to put my two cents in before, beforehand.
Let me add my two cents.
I was gonna add my two cents first.
I'll go ahead, Madam Chair.
And then I'll call you, Mr. Black, and I'm sorry, we had difficulty catching up. I think we all, we understand generally, a majority of the board, if not all the board realizes that, yes, as we grow, we're going to have to do new schools. We've already put out the call for companies for architectural ideas and advice on that. But all that takes time. The additions, my feeling is the additions on these buildings that we are already using will be a lot, a much shorter time, because we already know what it's gonna look like at, at Bowling Green. And we already know the basic layout of the old Bowling Green Elementary School. Have we gotten in there yet to look at it? No, but the rooms were there, because I know, because my kids went there. So those are things I feel we can move forward with faster than architectural designs, all your testing, all your bidding, all the things you have to do to build a new school, which we know will take some time. These are brick-and-mortar additions that even when a new school is built, will still have use. And they'll, they'll be ours. They won't be leased, they'll be ours. So to me, this is a better filler as we move forward. And then, of course, if we've wanted to, if we're really desperate for the next two year, two years or eighteen months while we work on getting classrooms done, you know, the, the, I assume it was the school board, I don't even know when Head Start was taken over by public schools instead of being run as, as a federal program. But that's another way to, to lower the, the number to bring in your, your new students that are moving into the county. I'm not saying I'm in favor of that, I'm just saying if you're looking at you know, ways you really need the space for the next year or two, then that is something that you have to look at, hard choice though it may be. So, Mr. Underwood.
Yeah, Madam Chair. I had a chance to read an email poster, someone sent me, that Mr. Thomas, I've been put on Facebook looking at the raw numbers. The school system since two thousand fourteen, you've grown two hundred children in the K-12, back in the, in the, from K-12. Your biggest growth came four years ago when you took in pre-K and Head Start. I don't understand why it didn't create consternation then. Why is it all of a sudden today, in the last year, it says, we've gotta do this, but over the last three years, four years, you've got the same number of children almost. You've grown a little. Take a look at your growth. Our K-12 buildings still fit our K-12 students. And that's what the funding from the taxpayers gives us, K-12 funding. We, I agree, I don't, I don't have an issue with pre-K or K. There's, there is a definitely need for pre-K. But you took it in without any conversation with this board about where the additional space is going to come from, where your additional need was going to come from. We had no say-so. I think if you can afford to do what you want to do, by all means, go ahead, but I'm saying that I will not vote to put trailers on any campus in Caroline County. I won't do it. When my children went to preschool and Head Start, I drove them there. I drove them. If it happens to be, has to be that way where we're centrally located for a year or so to get our elementary schools back to good numbers in the classroom, we, sometimes you gotta suffer to grow a little. But it's not really suffering, it's just a, an issue to me. But it's your decision. I said years ago to this board, give the school board their money, let them spend it how they choose to spend it. I still maintain that. But whenever there's a problem, then you say, we want money from the board. Well, we meet the required money from the state. We're giving you the money that is required by the state. Decisions that you make, you have to live with your decisions. We're saying we're willing to meet you a part of the way to overcome this issue, because it's gonna be an issue. We know, we recognize it's gonna be a greater issue in years to come. Well, actually, you've grown two hundred children in ten years in the K-12. You created this issue by bringing children into the K-12 element. You created that, not me. Not this board. And I say you, up to you to fix it. You want to fix it? We disagree, you have the money to do it, by all means, do fix however you choose to do it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Thomas?
Where I went to school, we had trailers and Fairfax, Fairfax has trailers. Prince William has trailers. Stafford has trailers, Spotsman has trailers. An education can happen in a trailer. It's not the end of the world. I, I think it's a, it's an, it's an avenue to keep them on, on a specific campus without the logistical issues of food service and transportation and things like that. I'm open, I'm very open to other ideas, but as I said in the last board meeting, I, I don't, I can't see dumping a ton of money into a building that the bones are, are flawed and decaying. If there's an alternative, I'm, I'm ready to hear it, but I'm not diametrically opposed to trailers, because I think it can be done well. And I have not received the same feedback as others have. And again, my observations of how it's being done in other places and these are counties that are, have grown, cities that have grown, that have utilized them temporarily, and that, that would be my intent to make them temporary. As I think it is everyone's intent to make them temporary. So just wanted to, I'm excited to see what we decide, but, and I will support what we decide as a group, but there's some, just know that I'm, and this board knows that. I've, I've been frank with everybody, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, so. Thank.
Okay. First of all, we could cut the tension in this room with a knife, couldn't we? So I think we need to, we need to first fix something. In the school package that, that Lisa was so nice to pass out, we have numbers for fifth grade, school board office. And I think that was an idea that I asked Mr. Colley to look at when he was talking about ideas of staff one-on-one. So to help everybody get back on track, Taylor called me shortly after I made that statement, probably Wednesday afternoon, and said that was the stupidest idea he'd ever heard. And I said, okay, tell me why. And he told me why. And I agree, that was the stupidest idea he ever heard. So we're eliminating ideas that don't work. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for that.
Can you tell us how it was a stupid idea?
Yeah, they're, they're ladies president. We have a different kind of relationship than you do. So, so, so really, the, the, the reason that I'm here is we want the best for Caroline, students, schools, county, taxpayers, everybody. This particular building was a school that was ruled no good for a school. The county invested money over a phased approach, and we saved this bill. You have buildings that you're not really using as a school right now. The county would like to save those buildings, even though they're still in the school board purview. You may decide to make those surplus at any point in time. But whatever, whatever investment we make in those buildings is a long-term investment in the county saving those buildings. So that's one thing that I would like to see. I, I also believe that if we make those temporary moves in a year or, well, probably two years, we could have some sort of extensions at Bowling Green, at Madison, where they'd like to be. I also agree that there's probably a need for a new school. We will have to have a meeting like this over and over again to decide where that new school goes, because I'm sure there are differences. But we'll all get together with some citizens and say, this is the best place, when we can do it. I, I think you understand the, the county's financial constraints at this point in time. So whatever we can do that we can afford is what we're willing to do right now. And that's, that's really what I have to say. So thanks again, Mr. Taylor.
You're welcome. Is it my turn?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Again, thanks for being here. Tonight's presentation.
Yeah.
Has one. Can we get? Tonight's presentation has one sole purpose. To address the critical enrollment and functional capacity concerns at Bowling Green Elementary School and to ensure readiness for school opening in August. The board's short-term bridge plan includes future trails at Lewis and Clark, a new elementary school by the end of year three, or twenty twenty-eight. An expansion at Caroline Middle School and the functioning of aging infrastructure, deferred maintenance, while the long-term plan includes an expansion of the high school. New and renovated transportation center and a significant investment in aging infrastructure. These items will not be discussed this evening, but will require additional joint conversation. What will occur this evening is the school board layout on the benefits of trailer. The costs associated with three trailer options and a cost comparison between trailers and the suggested bridge options by the board of supervisors. The school board will be requesting funds for Bowling Green Elementary School trailers approved this eve. This will be essential, as a purchase order must be submitted no later than June second for site readiness, delivery and installation to occur before the school's opening on Monday, August eleventh. To begin, it's important to quickly review the school board's facility work, which began in the winter of twenty twenty-four.
You can skip back down.
No, I, I, I would like to say, you know, I, I know, but I would just like for everybody here to hear what we've done. I want the citizens to know what we've done and how we came to these decisions. And I would appreciate it if you let me know. Thank you very much. In February and March of twenty twenty-four, the board chair, superintendent and A and E firm presented to the board of supervisors in closed session the facility study completed on vacant profit. The plan was declared. Between April and October, the school board contracted with RRMM to complete and public the comprehensive facility and the demographic, demographic study. In November, the school board received, reviewed and evaluated eight comprehensive ten-year facility plans, a rubric that was used to narrow the scope of projects to four, which reflected alleviation of overcrowding, reduced deferred maintenance, addressed transportation facility, anticipated future growth. Reflects right-size practices based, based on the recent practices, duration of the project required, does not require redistricting and expense a fiscally sound option. In January of twenty twenty-five, the full comprehensive plan was presented at a school board meeting in February and March. These options were shared with the board of supervisors at a joint board meeting and at approximately fifteen community advisory meetings. The board of supervisors noted borrowing and debt service limitations and requested that CCPS return with a short-term and long-term option. On April sixteenth, the school board presented a short-term, long-term option for reflecting moderate growth numbers and for reflecting high growth. Options one A and one C, two A and two C were deemed not viable due to included property being under purchase and sale agreement. Plan one D and two D were thoroughly discussed due to the inability to identify property available for lease. With the pending school year months away and a critical need noted at Bowling Green Elementary School, the school board conducted a special call meeting on May sixth, where the board unanimously approved two motions. Trailers will be the short-term bridge plan, the bridge, bridge plan results in a new elementary school at the end of year four to three, or twenty twenty-eight. At this regular school board meeting on May twelfth, the board unanimously voted to keep pre-K within their home schools. This plan has resulted in this evening's meeting and ultimately the pending financial request. Let's take a closer look. Benefit of learning cottages. Benefit one. Modular, readily accessible, only option that reduces overcrow. Most affordable short-term plan. It addresses enrollment and functional capacity concern. Appropriate classroom space for growing enrollment numbers and programmatic growth is addressed also. It eliminates the need for SOL testing and clipping and quadrupling of services provided. The third benefit preserves instructional space and supports spare retention. Ensures classes. Ensures classes. It deals with the STEM program. And. We would need. To use sections of the library. The fourth. Benefit. It maintains all Bowling Green Elementary students on campus. With faith. It encourages access to all services and eliminates recurring costs. With Bowling Green Elementary School principal and leadership team gathering to discuss. August twenty twenty five readiness. The following benefits to learning colleges were highlighted. With the ease of consumption. Consumption, they have been categorized in four areas. Modular. Access and affordability. Addresses enrollment and capacity issues. Programming, preserves instructional space. And supports staff retention and maintains strong Bowling Green Elementary students on campus.
What does faith mean?
Uh, it has to do with special education. Special education need.
Free. And inappropriate. And inappropriate.
Free and appropriate public interest.
Okay.
And, and, and Mr. Taylor, we will concede that the, the trailers or modular units we have are good. So if you want to skip to. The back, that would be great.
Okay, I'm just so hard here. Uh, the new molecular unit. It, it show. One building under the roof, city classroom. One hallway. Two communal bathrooms and two ramps. I think, I, I would just like to add that it's not the trailers that we talked about years ago. There is no safety concern. They are under one roof. And it's all their fault. Who's gonna go in the trailer? We're great. Uh, I don't know exactly how that's going to be configured. We're gonna look at that. Or I can ask if someone from staff would like to address that.
Regular meetings with Principal Haxwell, who is here this evening, and we've talked about a variety of options. But we have not solidified our plan nor made it public. We would want to do the third and the fourth of talking with the staff members before we share that out loud.
Thank you.
Okay. New modular unit's location. Uh, basically they're gonna be on a blacktop foundation. And they're gonna be movable. We can, we can use these. These have a life of twenty-five years. And we can move them. Throughout the county as they are needed in other situations. So. If middle school becomes an issue and we solve. The elementary problem, they can be moved to the middle school. They can be moved to the high school. Of course, ramps. Uh. Exits to and from the building. Uh, and they are currently accessible sidewalks over it. Uh. The new molecular unit picture gives you an idea. They have a one-year manufacturer warranty. You have. Rubbermaid, membrane root, individual H that's you.
We, we, we agree and believe you and everything.
Oh, I understand. I just want to make sure. You spend a lot of time.
And, and. And, and we can see you spend a lot of time.
At, at this point, I'd ask. Want you to.
Right, yes, sir. Well, you heard the educational benefits surrounding our, uh. Adoption of this trailer short-term plan. Then we will talk about the costs. Uh, we do have three, uh. Options with respect to the purchase of, of trailers. And I am confident that you, as well as the public, will show. That these options are much more fiscal and responsible than the options that have been currently presented. So option one is the purchase of said trailers. Uh, this will be a one-time pay-in full for brand-new units. Uh, and solve costs to include freight, delivery, setup, et cetera. Uh, Caroline County Public Schools would have ownership from day one. And it does come with a one-year factory warrant. So the, the purchase, um, all-inclusive would be seven hundred and forty-one thousand, uh, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. Now, for the approximate infrastructure cost. Um, that would include fire alarm, intercom, water sewer, network, technology, fencing. Uh, security system, uh, A and E site plan, permits, access badge. I'm sorry, access control, which includes badge readers and whiteboards and furniture, et cetera. The approximate infrastructure cost would be three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So the total, uh, investment. For option one would be one million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. And, uh. The purchase of these trails would permit, um, Caroline County Public Schools to move modules to other locations. As the school division and county, uh, work collaboratively to address the short-term and long-term, uh, growth goals. At the elementary, middle and high school levels.
How many?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Uh, moving, cost of moving. If you, if you decide to move them to another, a trailer to another school.
Well, sure.
Have you looked into that?
We can get that to you. We actually have a representative from Belmont with us. I don't know if we can turn and ask him that question if permissible.
If he can answer it.
He can answer it.
If he can answer, that's, he can do that.
Oh. Okay, well, thank you, um, Madam Chair. From the board, I appreciate you having to speak to you all today. Uh, I'm really good to answer a lot of the questions regarding the details and give that information to you first thing tomorrow. And what that would cost to knock the building down. Package it and remobilize it. But the primary function of a modular building is inherent in what it's used for, temporary. Which is what I'm assuming what the county wants is something to temporarily place students. At a location to do what they're supposed to do, which is school, then education. And then ultimately, if the needs of the county change. You can take that building, package it up, move it to another location. Set it up for a similar use. And you've already got, you've already spent the money on the bill.
But. What is the cost of the actual move?
I have to get that to you because it's more than just looking at a simple number. I can get the number to you tomorrow morning.
All right, thank you.
How many units are, are in this cost comparison option one?
Six, five, five, five?
Six classrooms, two communal bathrooms, two.
No, how many? Is it, is it one million per unit?
No, for the whole.
How many, how many?
Six classrooms.
So which, if you want to go back to the slide, I can explain to you. It's a bigger full back six. So which you bet is. Six, seven modules each classroom. If you look left or right, you see the H, you see it on the left. On the upper left, that's one module. The line in the middle is the main line. That's when two buildings come together at that place. And the H back in is alternate on each side of the building. So each classroom is gonna have its own thermal controls. Heating and cooling. In a typical old method of building trailers, which these are not trailers. These are high-performance modular buildings. There's difference. So each classroom is gonna have its own controls. They're gonna have their own lighting. They're gonna have their, uh. Ailing people restrooms on both left and right in the middle. So seven modules.
Seven modules that are coming on.
I think your question is. Older modules. Where are the modules go? It will go into, is this enough for all?
Well, that was gonna be the next, the next question, but, but I just wanted a cost comparison since we're doing cost comparisons, but. Again, I, I mean, I, I. Believe you've done site plans and things of that nature, so I don't, I don't need to worry about that. I'm waiting for Mr. Fortune to finish so we can talk cost comparison.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. So, uh. Acknowledging the, the county's, um, financial situation, we do have option two available. Uh, option two is the trailer capital lease with an option to buy. Uh, the total cost will be divided by the length of the lease. Uh, twenty-four, thirty-six or forty-eight months. Uh, we, uh. Went with the forty-eight. Eight-month plan, uh, based on flexibility, time schedule, et cetera. Uh, within this option, the solve cost can be included in the lease. Uh, as mentioned, uh, before, to include freight, delivery, setup, et cetera. Uh, there is a one-year faculty, uh, faculty, sorry, faculty warranty. Uh, with option to buy at the end of the lease. Uh, we was receiving an invoice for one dollar at the end of the lease and C C P S would own. Uh, those trailers at the end of each term. Uh, the cost on a monthly basis would be seventeen thousand, uh, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, for a total of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety-four. Uh, the approximate infrastructure cost remained the same at three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, for a total investment of one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Uh, once again, uh, with this particular option, it would give us the ability to move, uh, these modular trailers as needed. As the school division continues, uh, to grow. Uh, and I know Mr. Colly's in the room. I would, uh. Wonder if this particular, uh, option would be, uh, a less burden on the county based on the fact that it could be spread out over multiple fiscal years. Um, so that's something I would like the board to consider, uh, when, uh, looking at option number two. Uh, the third and final option is the trailer lease option, the traditional lease. Uh, once again, uh, we looked at a forty-eight month lease. Uh, the bulk solve costs are included, um, in the operational lease, once again, of freight, delivery and setup. Um, and, but must be paid upon delivery. Uh, with this option, C C P S must pay personal property taxes. Uh, there's a one-year faculty warrant as well. And at the end of the lease, uh, of course, C C P S would have to pay for trailer removal. Uh, and return to the company. So this lease option comes at a cost of fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars, uh, per month or, uh, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-six cents. And includes these, uh, already stated, uh, infrastructure costs. Uh, for a total investment of one million, uh, seventy-eight thousand dollars, uh, three hundred and sixty cents. So those are the three options, uh, by way of financing that we are presenting to the supervisors tonight.
And, and you also gave us in our packet today, we got this, uh. What, what you're calling a cost estimate for. Renovating. School Board Office. And, and if we, and, and your total is seven point eight million.
Yes.
Um, but if we look at it and we take out the five million for deferred maintenance, which is there. And say maybe we do that five million dollars in deferred maintenance over time. I think we had somebody look at the roof and it wasn't quite that. As memory serves. I did go through the. Preliminary study done by the architect about what to do, and I think the roof and. Securing the building is about three million, but somebody said the roof was still in good shape. So that was two point five million. We didn't have to spend. But if I take the deferred maintenance, we're looking at. Two and a half million. Versus one point two million or one million. Two and a half million if, if we renovate. School Board Office. Which has a, um, kitchen, doesn't it?
That require renovation, that'll probably over a million dollars. That is. Within the five million dollars.
Wait, we're not, we're not gonna have Chef Ramsey here for a million dollars to renovate the kitchen?
That is exactly what was put in by the architectural.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I'd, I'd agree with that number, but. It's that's the number you said. It's still unused now?
No, it is not.
When was the last time the kitchen was used?
It was in use when Lewis Academy and head start, or part of the bowling.
It wasn't used after that.
No, sir.
So, so really, I think for. For me and what I, what I've said before, and, and I think I said it to you. Our choice. Is. Trailers that are. What I considered money that, that we're never gonna get back. Or renovating a building. Where we eventually in the long, in the long run gain. Access to that building and further use. Well, and, and I think this is when we need to start talking.
Right, well, I, I, I think what you're saying, I, I, I take what you're saying, but. When we purchase these trailers, and we say we're never gonna get that money back. The trailers belong to us. We, we will own them. And we can use them. They can be moved from one site to the next as needed. And then in the end, if it becomes that we've built all new schools and we don't need them. We can sell them. I mean, there are things that we can do. Uh, we have looked very closely. At what it would cost to renovate. These schools to make them operable for what we need.
Make them school-worthy.
Good.
Well, and. And it's a distinctive between school-worthy and other facilities.
Well, well, I, I, what I'm saying is. In order for it to meet the needs that we had. It was far more expensive to renovate them. Than it was to purchase the trailer. Then the other thing is. The trailers are nicer. They're newer. There's something to be said for children. It's something to be said for have feeling good about yourself. There's a correlation. Between going to school in a newer facility. Teachers have a better. Idea. Children get along, but I, I, you know, maybe I'm wrong. But I just feel like replacing. Those older buildings with all these hundreds of thousands of dollars, making them school-worthy. And then after three or four years, when we don't need them anymore, the county takes them over and that's fine. But they're not gonna be used for schools anymore. So you're gonna have to redo all of that to make your county worth. To me, that seems like a, a real loss of money, but I'm not in the county, so I don't wanna get into that. But I, I, I would just say that. As a school board. We are concerned about doing what's best for our children. And sometimes that might not be always popular. That might require a tax increase. That might require some funds from businesses as they come into the county. But are, are our children worth that?
Nobody ever, nobody ever doubted.
We're talking about space now because.
But we're talking about children and we're talking about what's needed for children. And that's all I want to.
And especially for this year.
These are new trails.
Brand new trails.
Brand new.
And they will be, if, if we are able to get access tonight, they can be operational by this coming school year.
But you don't even know who's going in the trail.
But we know someone is going in the trails and we know that everyone will be able to stay at their own campuses.
And who's going in the trail of this? Okay.
So the pre-K kids are going to the trail.
I mean, you know.
So with this, and I don't, maybe I didn't hear it like this long. I'm sorry.
That's all right. No, I just, you go ahead. Then I had a question.
So was this, where, like, so this would just be at one location, correct? I mean, so where, what location would it? Because I know we have, we have overcrowding at, uh, Lewiston Clark. We have overcrowding at Mass and we have overcrowding at Bowling Green. So we're talking about one set. So where are we, where, where are we talking about? To me, this would alleviate one of your three problems.
This is an immediate bridge plan for Bowling Green Elementary. They are already one classroom down for the twenty-five, twenty-six. They have eight remediation intervention occupational therapy sites in the hallways. They are getting a third, most language learner teacher, and they will have no location. They're getting a third counselor and will have no home for that service.
So this is just.
Six trailers that are needed and will automatically be filled. Either with programmatic services or a grade level.
So can I follow up with that? I got.
Yes, Mr. Black, go ahead.
So like my district, I mean, not that I don't care about Bowling Green, because I do, and I'm in favor of actually adding to Bowling Green, but. I mean, my, my question is, my question is like, how does that solve my problem?
And as previously stated, people definitely need to come back to the table for the continued steps of the short-term bridge plan, including Lewis and Clark. Including C M S expansion, including transportation. But Lewis and Clark has one vacant classroom currently. That we know can be used. They also, because they have larger square footage, they have no interventions currently in. Classrooms or that hallway. They're all currently in smaller spaces. So the immediate August need did not match the immediate need of bowling green, but it will be there and it will be coming around for two point oh. This is the August twenty twenty.
Okay, so, so what happens next year when I'm out of classrooms at Lewiston Park?
This is, this is decision one.
This fall. To talk about Lewis and Clark. We are not pulling Lewis and Clark out of the table. We're simply saying we have a sense of urgency.
Right, right, right.
Immediate need for bowling.
But what I'm saying is, are we, are we gonna be back here in the fall looking at these for Lewis and Clark and then leave these for?
Absolutely. There are other aspects with Lewis and Clark that we would not be able to.
So this is really, we're really looking at like three million rather than one million.
You, you might be correct when we come back to certain, it'd be probably close to two, to two point three. To get us to a new elementary school. To meet that need rather than suddenly millions of dollars. To get us to a new elementary school, to meet that need, rather than suddenly millions of dollars to spend on the building. That would be pretty good. And they're replaced.
Oh, right.
Smaller about.
Okay. Jason, Mr. Building Official, Jason, um, how, how difficult is it? The, I mean, are these things, are they good structures? Are they difficult to put together, or?
Um, so I've heard the terms kind of run out of, like, uh, trailers or modulars. Good building code, they're neither, so they're five building units. Um, so they're going to factory, inspected in a factory, signed soon in a factory, and then it's shipped out with the label. Um, the state actually prolongates that, and they're the overseer of that. So what we're responsible for is site hookup, so any connections to that, to that structure. Uh, so, uh, you know, we, they, they can do a commercial when you're a nursery unit, or you do residential, so that doesn't matter. As long as your usage is correct. Something that I've discussed with the schools in our meeting, that, you know, use means degress. Fire alarm, all the, uh, fire safety requirements all have to be met, whether it's in industrialized building unit or standard.
So, I mean, but are these things pretty easy to put together and overall pretty safe?
Pretty, yeah, I mean, once you deliver them to the site, uh,
Pretty easy to get your approval is the question.
Uh, well, that depends on how the business moves. That's also something we discussed, uh, about some pitfalls and some of the pitfalls, uh, that could be is, is maybe a lack of an A and E coordinating thing. I'm not saying that's going to happen, I'm just saying that. From my experience, I've seen that in the past. Whereas on a new construction, you'll have a, a, a C A and an A and E kind of overseeing that, coordinating all the different, uh, disciplines to ensure somewhat of a seamless strength, you know, uh, project. Um, whereas if you're gonna bring modulars, the modular guy or the industrialized building unit guy might be, you know, his scope is that. Right? So how does that now tie into the electrical work or the, um, plumbing or, you know, so as long as all those scopes are buttoned up, then it can go well.
And just one last question, if I may, on the follow-up on that. When you, if you talk about like today, because I've heard, you know, and I, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, it's just a matter of a time issue. If, if we start today, but we're gonna add to agenda Bowling Green, and we're gonna add classrooms to Madison and Bowling Green. What, like, what it would be a reasonable timeframe to start, right? So we're, we're gonna come up with plans today to add to those elementary schools to, to alleviate some of the temporary needs there. What are you talking about for being student-ready? Pre-designed, CEO.
So you're talking about like a, an addition?
An addition.
Yes.
Gotcha. Um, if, if today's ground zero, like today you're starting, you know, I, I would assume you're probably looking at, probably going to build sometime next year.
And so finish, finish would be?
Whatever, whatever that timeline looks like, probably.
So you're looking at two full years?
Somewhere in there, eighteen.
Twenty-seven. But even, even with this plan of trailers, Mr. Fortune, if we go to trailers and then we have trailers at Bowling Green, at, at Lewis and Clark, and maybe Madison, they would stay there until we built a new elementary school. Right. Well, let me ask somebody else, Dr. Hubbard. Because really, I mean, I, I, I think we all need
Bridge, yeah, that's the bridge we're talking about.
Right, right, but, but that's, that's like a how long, and again, I wanna talk to all of y'all. Okay? And I, I hope all of y'all wanna talk to all of us. But, but that's how we finally get to the end result, which we all wanna be something positive.
Uh, this goes back to the importance collaboration, uh, before we get to fire. Spend time planning, deliberate plan that makes sense. Now, I know that's reaching to the bar. But one of the things I think we have to be honest about is the timeline for a new school. I've heard each and every member of the board say that two to three years is unrealistic. And I think that that's a factor that we have as a school, as a community, have to understand. If we can't get there in two to three years, then what is a realistic, doable plan? Now, if the life cycle of, of trailers or what have you, uh, we can discuss that until, I guess, there are different definitions a, across the board, and I'm not gonna go down that road. I think what is before us tonight is quite simple. Either, uh, we receive the support of the board to, uh, to purchase trailers on the county's dime. If that does not happen, if that, if, if you will do not reach that conclusion, then, um, giving the schools, the school division, the opportunity to use its own funds, whether they be end-of-year term, uh, funds or capital improvement funds, authorization to do that is, would be required. So either we vote for the funding for the school, uh, trailers. If that does not fit well with you, and what I'm hearing from the, the many dyes here, it doesn't sound like it's, it's very favorable. If that's not the case, then at a minimum, we, we will need some type of author clearance, authorization to use what funds we do have to resolve the immediate year-term issue, which is the overcrowding in both Bowling Green Elementary School and Lewis and Clark.
Okay.
Can we just ask Dr. Rollins first? Because she's ready to go, I can tell.
Only have two pages of notes in front of her, so.
Very good listener. Um, and I strive to not talk and see if there are other people out, so. I have a couple of things. I think there's a win tonight, and I think we need that in the room, right? Um, and I took a picture of the slide so I could see, and so I was glad to hear that the county and the school board is in agreement to address transportation. That is a win. Um, we know that that is an immediate need, irregardless of what's going on with the school. Um, we've got to get these big enough for our buses, so I'm gonna start there with a thank you. We've been, we've been saying that, and I hear you, and I appreciate that. So that's the win. I think, um, what I'm hearing tonight from the notes that I took, it's there are two issues. One is funding, and then one is functional, programmatic, operational. Um, and again, I heard a win. The win that I heard was the trailers are short-term. So I think we should all nod our heads and say, thank God, we got a win there. With that short-term option, who goes in the trailer is a valid question, is one that I asked. But that's where I had to back up and say we're governance, not operations. And staff will look at the best way to do that. I think the third win that I heard is, we don't necessarily want children trucking in and out of buildings. Excuse me for being casual in my language, but I think it's important.
I like it, because I like
Community people get it, right? Um, and so I think hearing that from both boards says, when you work out the plan, make sure that we have that, um, committed. One of the things that I also noted was, at some point in time, because I went to middle school in this building, um, and so at some point, it was deemed not suitable for education purposes. We're just a generation later saying that the same buildings that our parents and grandparents went to are now with the same discussion that we had for this building. I think that's a fourth win.
Yes.
When we come together, we can do something and have a multi-purpose unit or use for it. The caution that I have there is, there is an immediate need come August. That, yes, we need to come to a consensus on, are we gonna have a new elementary school? Uh, we can certainly have further discussions about adding on to buildings. But with all due respect to both boards, that does not change August bus rolling and kids off and needing to go to school. And so what we have been asked to do as a school board is to be responsive to your concerns. The first plans didn't work. This has a huge financial, um, impact with a timeline that's too long for the immediate need. And every day, I can't tell you how many board meetings B G E has had new numbers consistently. And so I do think that when we talk about how our numbers have not changed, um, over, I think the comment was the last four years. Uh, we also have new housing developments with people turning locks and keys that have not been here five, six, seven years ago. So it just is what it is. We have more kids. And not only do we have more kids, we have more kids with needs and services that have to be addressed. So, um, I know my voice on the board has said, we got to work to do, we have to invest the money. Personally, I don't care what anybody's opinion is, if you are not a subject matter expert. So let's invest the money, get the A and E firms in here, stop telling me that, okay, I don't care about the color of the roof, is it functional? What's it gonna cost to repair? And so we've come with the data to drive the decisions. So when we create different options, I think we need to go back to the data. When we look at handling children, we need to go back to program. We need to go back to best practice. And so I personally have a concern with elementary schools that potentially have well over a thousand students. That is not best practice, and it's certainly not best practice in rural communities with the needs that we have. So I do want to say, I think that out of respect for the ideas that were presented, that we can respond to your suggestion, unlike that you came to the table with something that is great. Um, but for tonight, if we can narrow our focus to what decision do we need to make for August, um, that would be good. The last thing that I wanna say, uh, is because I've been very vocal about Head Start. And, um, I think there's a factual statement that needs to be public, and there is a misconception that when Caroline County assumed a grant that, um, there were massive impacts to K-12. And it has also been stated in the community, doesn't matter who it came from, because it's a belief that's out there, um, that we are servicing pre-K and Head Start at the expense of K-12. And we discussed that last time. It's not a monetary impact, and in terms of space, um, and I'll look at staff again, correct me publicly if I'm not right, but Lewis and Clark and Madison were already hosting Head Start. And if I recall correctly, I think there were maybe two or three classes at Bowling Green, two. So again, when we put the facts to that, it's not that there is this massive displacement because we took on something. Um, and Head Start was a federal funded program with a private granting, and it's still a federally funded program. So I'll conclude my statement by saying, it's the immediate need, it's right size for that elementary. Um, we, I would be interested in that conversation about the long-term school, um, because I'm not clear on that tonight, I'm hearing a couple of different things. Head Start was and is a federal program. Our number of students have increased and their needs have increased, thus counseling, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the number of students that came over, the community center is a win, transportation is a win. For financial constraints, I appreciate the, the work that we did to say, if we have one-time lump sum money in this year's budget that can go to purchase the trailers, okay. If it needs to be spread out with the lease-to-own option, the math still works out. Um, and it's more perhaps feasible for you all. Um, the school needs are our purview. Um, and the trailers are short-term. So I know I said a lot, but that's my speech here.
I was trying to raise my hand, but you never recognized me. I felt bad. Good thing I didn't need to go to the bathroom.
Mr. Thomas.
Um, but you, you said over one thousand students is, is not, uh, a good idea. Where, where are we at over a thousand students within our elementary school?
Lewis and Clark, Lewis and Clark is a large school. When we talk about
Was that built for eight hundred?
Four to six classrooms, I think. Uh, twelve to fifteen classroom addition, twelve to fifteen classrooms. Uh, twenty-five
That was the answer.
Kids per class.
Okay, I, I
Like, it sounds like small numbers until you multiply by twenty-five children. That is
And, and we, we, um, Reggie was saying, when the board approved Lewis and Clark or, or got Lewis and Clark, it was based on the development that was going there at the time. So more developments come.
Yep.
We've got a site at Pendleton, was at Pendleton last week and didn't really recognize it because it's a lot different. So, you know, we had another win in that everybody is saying, we eventually believe there's gonna be a need for another school. So that's, that's a, a big, big win for all of us and the community. The issue of our definition of short-term, or, or my definition and your definition just now is the trailers are going to be there for four years.
So what I would be interested in, because I've heard a couple of different things, but now that we're all together, does the board of supervisors support a new elementary school in the future? Think that's a yes or no?
I think there's two paths. And I, I don't wanna talk, speak
Well, Pat.
The way, the way I see it, there are only two paths, if the trailers are temporary. One path is to add on permanent classrooms, gymnasium, push Bowling Green to that thousand number. Okay? At the same time, significant renovation in addition to Madison.
With a gym.
With a gym, kind of cafeteria, right, to push that not to a thousand, but closer to a thousand. Okay? And that buys us years. That's one option. The other option is trailers and probably all three elementary schools. And then we start as soon as feasible to construct a new school with the hopes that we have it done in three and a half years.
A thousand is not the number.
It's not.
It's not even close. It's a one hundred, seven fifty, eight hundred, maybe a little bit more, but a thousand is not the number.
What's your highest rated school right now?
Highest what?
Your highest rated school?
Number
Has a thousand skid kids in it.
That's not, that, that's, you can't just take that.
I'm just saying.
Regularly, I, I understand. I, I'm gonna say that we're
But my question is this, so, and let's look down the line.
Okay.
So there's, uh, a conversation about monitoring the numbers to see if there is a need for a new school. So we take our current students to a thousand capacity. And what I've, what I foresee happening is, oh, then there's no need for a new school. And they go right back here, again, starting the timeline over. And the reason why we're in the situation that we're in now is because there should have been, um, decisions from both boards. I'll say that. Um, and a push for the collaborative conversation to be able to vote. I think what's important to what, where you're going and the concern about trailers is you cannot, this is my, it does not make sense to me to have a bridge plan if you don't have a long-term plan, because what are we bridging to?
The bridge plan's off a cliff.
So if we say we need a new elementary school and we start today, the consistent ballpark number has been three years.
We can't brush it. Yes, you could fast track, but
Which is the ballpark. So I think that there needs to be big picture decisions. Because I hear the concern, are we piecemealing this? Coming from Bowling Green now, and then you're coming for something later, and then we're coming for the big picture. We need to make a decision for August, and then And then let's keep the conversation going.
Yeah. In my mind, August is already made up. I like this, but that's just me. But that's
My concern is Jason, can, with, with the site plan and all the stuff that they have to do, can they get there? Ground-wise, utility-wise, foundation-wise, with the structures coming? Would
Really don't know. I don't know when to plan it.
Could I ask for that? No, I know, I mean
The company that we are working with has assumed They already got a timeline.
Yeah, we have a timeline. Yeah, the timeline, but it's, it involves the building official. That's what I mean. And what's going to require, is the foundation for these any different than for anything else that's, that's temporary?
Well, this is the tip. Not in the building. That's 180 days. So this is permanent program. I know some of the discussions about like the ABS pads on Blacktop, I'm willing to entertain it. As long as we have the geotechnical information that backs it up. I know one of the concerns that Bowling Green haven't been to Lewis and Clark, so I won't speak to that. But Bowling Green is the lame form of position of that basketball court. I express some concerns about potentially some of those schools. I don't know if those have been evaluated or not, but certain
And if I, I'll get right back to you, Reginald. I just need to ask a, a quick question. One of the concerns I have about the trailer, it sounds good to say they're movable, but if it's going to cost you as much to buy a new one as to move one, so as soon as you can get that number, I would like to, to know that. Because even if we, we may have to invest in, in one, you may have to buy one, like you said, for this year. But if we're thinking of doing it in other places, I don't think you, until we have that figure, you can't look at it as a, I can use this wherever I need facility. Because it may not be viable.
Costs $49,000 for the newly constructed out of the factory, seven modular units to be transferred from, I think it was Pennsylvania or Georgia to Caroline. So I would imagine, and I, I don't have any background associated with movement of modulars, but I would hope that it would be a lesser
That's gonna be more, she gotta unhook everything and you gotta take them all apart. Probably three times.
Madam Chair. Dr. Rollins hit a, hit a point. And I think for me, my belief is that the school board doesn't believe that we want to build an elementary. Regardless of women, let me finish. We want to add on to those buildings because we see future use long-term for the money that we're going to invest in bringing those schools up to a good standard, I would say, where we would think kids would enjoy the facility, enjoy the environment. So
Are you talking about the current school?
The current, okay, Bowling Green and Madison. Yeah. Hopefully we wouldn't have to add on the Lewis and Clark, but those two buildings in particular. I think that our board is committed, saying that we know that we're going to need a new elementary school. I don't think there's anybody that says no. But the issue is, again, for me, that's the timeframe. It's impossible to do it in three years. The funding will not be there. We can start talking about it, discussing it, but realistically, we, we can't do that. So I'm saying, for, for me, it would make sense for us to make the best of facilities that we can use long-term later, put hard money into it, knowing that we're going to get to a new elementary school when the financial position that the county has clears up and, and we get additional revenue from the buildings that are, the businesses that are coming. We do have some business that are going to generate some capital and hopefully a large amount of capital for the county. But that's three to five years away. And I'm just looking at it realistically. So in three to five years, when the first dollar rolls in from one of the big investments that we've made, we're going to be at 2030. And I think that's when we're gonna have to really, I'd say, look at that long-term plan. Your bridge plan with trailers would get us there. But you're going to spend that $4 million, I think, I don't think it's going to be three trailers. I think it's going to end up being four or five trailers. And that's, to me, that's going to be money that I can see fixing a facility that we could use in the county, just like this building, long-term. And Mr. Taylor made a comment about old building, Harvard's 300 years old, they still educate people. So, so building is not, the age of the building is not the factor, it's the maintenance and how well we take care of it and what we put in the building determines the outcome. Just like going to the bank, put money in, you can draw money out.
Could I, could I add something when you're done?
Yeah, so that's my side of the fact. All right, to, to, to add to that, whatever short-term plan we come up with right now, tomorrow, this week, and can we, as the board of supervisors and the school board, move forward with expanding Bowling Green? Can we move forward and say, we're going to add some more classrooms and a gym in Bowling Green? While we, I'm one of the ones that admittedly say we need a new school, so that, that, that increase shouldn't affect the new school at all. Can we move forward with expanding Bowling Green, so as Mr. Taylor said, there's some newer facility on this side of the county? There's some people will talk. And the, the last one, which I'm, I'm very serious about, since you're not using the old elementary school as a school, the old Lady Smith school as a school facility, when do you plan to surplus that?
I'm gonna respond last thing. I appreciate your, your A question that I have is, what are we doing at Bowling while renovations are being done?
Adding, what was it, four classes and a gym?
What is happening in that school? Day one, August. Let's shift it for this, this thought.
Yeah, the same, the same, the same trailers or no trailers, or pre-K at school board office, the, the same thing. We're just, if, if, if we leave here, as, as Dr. Hubbard has said, and, and you say you're going to put trailers at Bowling Green no matter what, we would still like to expand Bowling Green Elementary, even though the trailers are there.
Am I hearing you say that you're agreeing to the trailer?
Excuse me?
Am I hearing you say that you are agreeing to the trailer?
No, you're not.
No.
So You're hearing me say whatever pro, whatever comes out of this meeting, which may be what Mr. Hubbard says, you, you can do things that, that make me happy that don't make me happy. Trust me, my feelings are not an issue here. You, you know, so whatever happens, will we be able to, because there's a knockout wall. We can pretty much seal it off, so the construction's on the other side. Nobody sees it. In two years, Jason, because we're gonna make sure you're there. But we haven't expanded school in two years. And that's a shorter, short-term plan than anybody had, had come up with.
So can I ask a
Well, no, I gotta finish, when we get the, the old Lady Smith surplus, since you're not using it as a school. That's a building that the county has a lot of interest in, in making it a county facility. Moving some county services over there, because just like you don't have room for kids, we don't have room for adults. And I, I'd like to put a department there and expand parks and recs, if that, that's what we're doing and even be nice to the people that are there now.
My answer to that question, and I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for me. It is not my position that we make decisions to surplus anything until we have a plan for what we are doing. But I do hear you say that there is county interest in that building. And I do believe that we should work together to serve the community. Where I draw my line is not on the backs of our students. So I'm personally not in favor of not resolving the educational issue that we know that we have at this, at the expense of students. And again, that does not represent the core, that is mine.
And that's fair. And, and, and I, I would counter that, that surplusing that building would have no effect at all on students, since there are no students in that building. And the school board has no plan to use that building for students.
But Mr. Thomas, if we have to use our fund to purchase those trailers, if we have the funds and we have to do that, then that means we're going to be not doing something else.
That, that has nothing to do with surplus and build.
Well, it may not.
I'm talking about surplus and
It may not, but it's, it's all involved in the same issue, because
One has nothing to do with the other.
Yes, it does.
No, no, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
I think you're, you're looking too far ahead.
We asked them to go least
Wait, who? Oh, right, right, right. Well, yeah, we can put them at the school board office for sure.
I think, I think what I'd like is that I In the bigger picture, again, it's a win to know that old lady is something that there's an interest in, and as we are considering our options, to know that you're willing to invest in that building because it is key to the community and their multiple uses. I'm halved because the presentation that was, that started our meeting included that building with some other preparation. Now, I think it's a continued conversation.
Right. But I think I really do feel that tonight we need to sort of stay more zero, because even I got lost on that conversation. Sorry about that. But we need to, to concentrate on what we're here for tonight, which is what other information we need, what we're going to do, do we need to meet again to figure out what's going to happen in August? You know, the trailers certainly are a lot better, but I don't know, has anybody checked to see if you can even hook that trailer up to sewer? Is there a sewer line over wherever you're planning on putting it? So
One question.
Okay, just a moment, right here.
My only, my only concern is, we were, we were just a minute ago, I heard from our board that we were, we don't have money, we have to wait for revenue. Now we're talking about adding to Bowling Green, which is definitely like immediately, if we don't have the money. So I don't understand how that works, because that would be more expensive. I mean, if we have the money, we have the money. If we don't, we don't, but it's, I, I don't understand how we're saying we don't have the money, but then we're talking about adding in addition.
We didn't seem to have the money.
Well
If you recall, my comment was that we could take money, one-time money out of the general fund for destruction, or fixing some of those buildings. We could not take money and finance, that's where we get into trouble. So Mr. Colley has fixed the budget, so we're taking $0 out of the general fund to operate the county and all of its so we, we are over the threshold for, for general fund. So we do have one times mon, one time money that we could do some projects.
The, the, the money that they talked about tonight was, in the leasing, was 17, 14 to $17,000 a month. Which when we which, which we make, you know, times whatever months it is. Which we make decisions all the time. Something comes up to us at a board meeting, we make 50, $100,000, $200,000 decisions that we don't know about at board meetings all the time. So when you start talking about the bigger picture, if this solves the crowding issue, we're talking about $17,000 a month, to me, kind of, it's a no-brainer until, until such time as we can sit down with the schools and talk about where we're going to put new elementary school.
In that, I mean, we, we do need a decision tonight in order to be able to be in a position to have this option available for August, where we can alleviate our overcrowding at Bowling Green Elementary in August. So we won't have to have instructions being placed inside the halls of our most at-home school that we currently have.
You need to vote on this tonight? Yes.
They have to know by June 2nd. We have to notify them by Go over more detail, so Madam Chair, you asked for the pricing to knock the buildings down to move them. Based on the numbers I looked at from the proposal, you're looking at a budget between $75,000 to $200,000 to fully knock it down, package it, and move it to its new location, which is roughly 10% of its cost. And if you're looking at the June 2nd date, that's actually the date to meet the August 8 deadline for delivery, to be here that following Monday to be operational. If we miss, if we can't put CO into the factory by Friday at noon the 2nd, that date's awful. This isn't like you're adding water and creating a gremlin. You're actually building a fully functional building that's constructed stronger than most people's homes. It's built in a factory, transported down the highway, to take the rigidity of the stress of a truck, pulling it down the road, getting it on-site, putting it together to meet the requirements of the industrial building code that state of Virginia mandates. So there's a lot of questions that are being flying around, and people are saying, these are trailers, they're not very, they're not sustainable buildings. They're hyper-forming structures. They're held to higher standards than most people's homes. And we're putting children in there to meet the standard of educational needs. I could go on and on and talk for hours. I love what I did. These buildings are built properly.
And to stay tomorrow. And to move, to move them again, to move the trailer that they're looking at again, would cost how much if we needed to relocate it approximately?
In today's numbers, you've got future
Future inflation change. Yeah. Okay, just
So we're not, not including the utility disconnection, starting arrangement, and other soft costs around potential, maybe having to put different types of foundations in, because I don't know the future use, where it's going to go. There's other, we don't know where it's going to go later.
Right?
So just like the comment that was made earlier about the foundation system at Bowling Green, the foundation system will work for 2,500 pounds per square foot. I put in buildings that are 30,000 square foot, two-story modular structures on ABS pads in the city of Norfolk. You guys ever heard of the Anthroth Bridge Song? When you drive through that tunnel and you look over and see the huge modular complex, I put all those buildings over it. Well over 150 modules for that construction project, the building song. I could talk at length.
I, I think
They come from the factory, circulate it, lighting in the ceiling, plumbing in the building, and unfolding has to be done on-site. It was, got it very, very quick.
If I may, we need a decision. Because we have to be in place to, to make this work. If we get a decision tonight, one way or the other, depending upon that decision, then we can determine whether or not, we can determine our next move and what we have to do. The one thing that I'm certain of is the 11th of August, buses are going to roll and children are going to in place, and we have to help.
Well, I, I'm gonna say just for me, I, I appreciate the meeting here together. We, we started last year with, with four options that were all, and I think I said publicly, they were all good options. We just couldn't afford $60 million at that time. We're back now and we had another meeting, we talked about trailers at Lewis and Clark, Madison, and Bowling Green. Now we're just talking about trailers at Bowling Green, so bless you. I am, bless you again. I'm you know, I'm the one who said that I, I wanted to support investing in physical building. And I, I think that's still where I am, that's why I asked Dr. Rollins' fells, but it was really to the entire board. If we can build on to Bowling Green while we're doing your short-term plan, I think that would be a win-win for all of us.
And it's not a win-win if you're not going to finance it.
I'm going to finance adding on to Bowling Green.
We need trails for August.
I'm going to finance adding on to Bowling Green.
What about August?
I'm with Mr. Hubbard's proposal.
We need to go to our meeting.
We need, we need a motion one way or the other. If you're saying you're not going to finance the train, that's your decision to make. We just need to, we just need to know that officially so that we can do what we need to do.
I'm saying we use your, whatever fund balance you have, you use to buy the trail.
So we have excuse me. For, I know, I know that you, uh, normally have funds left over at the end of the year, correct? That, and a lot of times it's come back to, to us. And was I correct in hearing you, you said that, that you have, you can't give it back to us? But there's a way we could do that, is that correct? If there are funds left over that you can put your, sell the funds toward the trailer?
May I make a request as proportion here of FY24 reversion funds amount that are still in our corporate for consideration?
Yes, so
Okay, so, sorry, I was asking.
Absolutely. So, uh, fiscal year twenty-four carryover fund balance amount stands at nine hundred, uh, ninety-four thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. And we would ask for approval to you
Nine hundred and ninety
Nine hundred and ninety-four thousand.
That's your twenty-four.
Just for your twenty-four carryover balance at this point.
Twenty-four, that means, that means in June, that means in June of twenty-four, at the end of the school year, you had a million dollars left over?
Nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and six, yes, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and seven
That's a million to me. I don't have that much money to say it's not, but
And, but we would ask that, uh, we would be able to use those funds for purchase of, of the trails. One?
What?
We need an agreement with a lot of student addition in the junior.
Yeah.
We need to go to our meeting.
Nancy, we need to adjourn our meeting. We're way over.
So I get to We can use those funds.
Nobody said anything. But we need a motion. Do it here.
We're in recess. We can't do it.
We can't do it. We can't, we can't motion here. We have to go back. Right, we're in recess. We need to go back to our meeting.
Can, can, can we work on the Bowland Green, uh, addition?
I mean, I, I can tell you what you can do. Well, that's not a decision for me to make.
Do we make, uh, would, would there be an agenda amendment to, uh, settle this issue tonight by chance?
Are you guys going to let us do the additions at Bowland Green with the classrooms in the gym?
I'll make the, I'll make an, I'll make, I have to make one.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we just didn't want to take action in the
We can't We have, we have to go back in. We can't, we can't make
Well, we can. We can't. We just recessed.
We just recessed.
We continue our meeting. All right, I take it there'll be a two-minute break or something?
I need five.
Yeah.
I need five.
All right, let me, let me go for somebody else.
Y'all need to adjourn.
We are going to move, skip down the agenda and move to our, uh, public hearings, public comments, and then we'll move, move forward from there. So at this time, if there's anyone who would like to speak to the board, please come forward, state your name and your voting district. And you have three minutes to speak on anything that is not up for public hearing tonight.
Chairwoman Long and board members, my name is Joseph James. I vote in the Reed Church District. I just wanted to take a few minutes this evening to come out and say thank you. I came here a couple of weeks ago with a concern about Route Thirty and Secretariat Road. People could not enter the roadway safely. After coming here and some other people calling, we have a platoon of people in the community calling, expressing our concerns with VDOT and the people here in the county responsible for the roadways. You guys did an outstanding job. That issue has been solved so far as being able to see the roadway. I remember once before it being that clean. There was something here that held in the county like a Tour de France, called it Tour de Caroline. There was a bike race. BDOT did the same thing then. They cleaned that road exceptionally well and did the same thing this time. I want to say thank you for every, that, every, everyone who participated in getting it straight. Now, one other concern is the guard rail there is still torn down. A car ran through there about thirty or forty miles per hour and just ripped it out of the ground. It still has not been fixed. It's a concern of mine that at the top of the crest of the hill beyond signboard, if, if a tractor and trailer is there and Harley Davidson bike comes around that tractor and trailer, a car entering the road or coming down from Sadie Lane will have nowhere to go. That guard rail saved someone's life from Maryland when, when he went through that guard rail. This time, that will not happen. If they leave that roadway, they're going to go into several trees that is beyond the guard rail. So I come here to express my concern about the repairs for the guard rail being done. The other thing I want to express a concern about, and numerous people from our platoon has been calling VDOT about the paving of Secretariat Road. You all know Secretary cares a promising name here in the county, the greatest racehorse that ever lived. The road that carries her name, his name, should be repaired. I understand that some budget dollars have been set aside for the purpose of repaving that road. It probably has not been paved in maybe fifty years. Who live on that road? My family used to live there. I live across the road. And I have a lot of family members, friends and constituents of yours who live there now. Please make sure those who are responsible for setting up the budget for paving that road, pave it. Not just come out there with a bucket of asphalt and fill in a pothole, but I mean rip up the gravel and put down asphalt and press it and pave it. But those constituents that live there, we deserve the same thing that other people that is in the county get. Ladies Smith, they get it. Fort Royal, they get it. Woodford, they get it. Now Dawn needs the same thing. Don't forget us. Please pave that road. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And if you will give me a call tomorrow, I'll give you an update with VDOT.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else at this time who'd like to make a comment?
Hi, I'm Kayla Beany. I'm an athlete at Caroline High School and I play for, um, Team Loaded. At Caroline High School, I play volleyball, um, I run track and I play basketball. I play point guard in the guard position.
My name is Aljean Bori and I play for Caroline Basketball and I'm a point guard and I play for Team Loaded.
Good, good evening, board members. Uh, excuse me, I'm Coach Richardson. I'm the assistant girls' basketball coach at Caroline High School. I'm also the helping PE teacher and drivers' education teacher at the high school. Um, I'm also the director of Team Loaded Girls. And I'm just here just to express, uh, that we are thankful for what you've done for us in the past. And we are traveling again this year and we're looking for some sponsorship, possibly donations as we travel to Myrtle Beach, uh, South Carolina, um, June twenty-fifth through to twenty-ninth, uh, Louisville, Kentucky, uh, July twelfth through to fifteenth and, uh, Atlanta, Georgia, July nineteenth through to twenty-first. I'm just looking for some help with these young ladies. And there's also a couple of other young ladies that couldn't be here. Um, but these are the main two right here. Just looking for some help with our travel if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? There are anyone else who would like to make a comment at this time? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Now, let me see if I can go back to grab where we are on this agenda since we skipped around.
Amendments.
See. The
Amendments to the
We're going to do amendments to the agenda. We've already moved around a little bit, but what other amendments do we have, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to add two. Um, I would like to add a, um, discussion on, um, the situation that happened this weekend in Lake Landor with Aqua Virginia. And I would like to add a, um, also, I guess the school board needs a vote on, um, what we just discussed earlier. So, um, if that's possible, I'd like to add that as well.
All right. We closed, uh, we eliminated the one public hearing that was listed under number four. That, that was pulled. We can't go there. We gotta go below it. So, uh, how about if we put a ten A? Ten, ten A, ten B.
Excuse me, maybe ten C would be a response to Coach Richardson and, uh, young ladies, we've supported them in the past.
All right, so we'll have a ten A and ten B, a ten C.
So what did you have first?
Aqua.
Aqua first.
Aqua Schools and
School Board for your
And the Traveling Girls team. Thank you.
And staff, while we're looking at that, if anybody could find out what, uh, I think we donated to the traveling basketball groups last year. If you could send me a text as to what we gave last year, I appreciate that. If anybody could find it. All right. We are, any other amendments to, any other amendments to the agenda? All right, hearing none. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as marked up?
Madam Chairman, move that we accept the, uh, agenda as amended.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, submit. So we're going to go back up to, um, presentations and reports. Third quarter budget report. Mr. Cully, is that you? Am I wrong?
We're going to do.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Cully.
Yeah, we should just
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we're going to leave that. We're going to go to our public hearings. Which one do y'all want to do first? All right, so that brings us to Mr. Cully's proposed fiscal year budget.
Ms. Chairman and members of the board, this was the paper I had in front of me. I put the other one aside. An effort of time. I'm going to go through this fairly quick if this works. Um, I had to change this a little bit. I inadvertently left, um, the tax ticket and postal money, um, out of the treasurer's office. Got zeroed out and then she needed an increase and bank fees. So the numbers changed a little bit from the introduced budget. The total general fund budget, seventy-five million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. That's a five point, uh, two-eight percent increase over twenty-five. Um, FY26 total proposed all funds budget, less transfers, uh, one hundred and fifty-five million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. That's a decrease, um, over FY25 of four point one-eight percent. And most of that is in, uh, the capital improvement budget under the three oh four fund, the schools fund, um, for that HVAC and other, uh, uh, work we were doing, uh, with the schools. Um, just a reminder for anybody here that didn't know, we've set the tax rate. Um, it was seventy-eight cent per hundred, but after the reassessed values went up, um, from reassessment, we set the tax rate at fifty-two cent per hundred. That's down twenty-six cents. Personal property, uh, machinery, tools, those things all stayed the same. Um, as Mr. Underwood stated earlier in a work session with the schools, the proposed transfer from the unrestricted general fund balance is zero dollars. Um, that's down three million, ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars, a hundred percent. Um, I do propose a transfer from the unrestricted general fund balance for one-time capital purchases. These are vehicles, um, and things of that nature of one million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. And we still have a proposed transfer from the Caroline Detention Facility Fund, um, of five hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So those are, uh, transfers into the general fund of two million dollars from, uh, the general fund balance and the Caroline Detention Fund balance. Um, the new positions in the budget, one full-time sheriff's sergeant for the courts. That's currently a part-time person and has not been, uh, the courts have gotten busy and it's not working. Sheriff, uh, asked for three other road deputies, but said this was his number one priority this year. And we could, we could, you know, manage to try to get those other positions in in a future budget. One full-time building inspector and an inspections department. Um, we would like to take the HR generalist that is part-time to full-time. So that's an upgrade from twenty-four hours to, uh, forty hours in basically benefits. And then four full-time positions in the utility fund, Fund Five Oh Two. Um, and those are split across, uh, collections and wastewater and the different interior, uh, departments within the utilities fund. That total includes five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Um, proposed funding for employees. Um, the constitutional officer is set by the state was a three percent pay increase. And, uh, four percent for employees not on the pay, pay plan and a one point five percent bonus for those comp board, uh, positions if it wasn't covered by the proposed increases in the county budget. That amounted to, um, the bonus amount, eight thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-one cent plus FICA. The rest of the other pay plans, which we have the public safety pay plan and the, and the regular pay plan is two percent adjustment to the scale for COLA and a step. So the public safety pay plan is about, that is actually two percent COLA and a two percent step. Uh, the county pay plan, which was done by our consultant, is two percent adjustment for COLA, but it steps not necessarily two percent. It depends on grade and, and what step you're on. Sometimes those are a little bit more, kind of averages out to about two, two, two point five, uh, for a step. Both plans would require satisfactory annual performance review to receive the step. Uh, total cost for that is one million, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Um, funding required for the retirement system, um, and impact of the hybrid, uh, plan and rate separation. Uh, VRS increase in the budgets, one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. And as you approved in January, the health insurance increased six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So when you total up FICA, VRS and health insurance, about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. When you move to the schools, the introduced, uh, county budget provides eighteen million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars in local funding to the school operating fund. And this is one million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-six, uh, dollars more than the FY25 contribution. This amount is a hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars above the required local effort, which equals out to a per pupil share of thirty-five additional students, uh, for growth above the planned ADM that's the, the budget's built off of. Um, so what I'm saying there is that, that I came up with a number, then I found out from the schools that what I was recommending was, um, lower than the required local effort due to the amount of money the state's put in the last few years. So I, I created the math to figure out, um, what to put in for thirty-five additional students. The budget includes five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars in transfer for school, now bus leases, the textbook fund and the school CIP also included is a capital transfer for school buses. Um, this goes to their three oh four, uh, capital improvement plan of seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is about fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one more dollars than twenty-five. Um, the net increase of all transfers to the public schools over twenty-five is one million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars or six point nine two percent increase. The general fund also supports four million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars in school-related debt service. So total transfers and payments for public sys, school system are twenty-four million, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven. And this represents a one point, three, uh, hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two, uh, dollar increase. And when you factor in the total school The budget includes five hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars in transfer for school now bus leases, the textbook fund and the school CIP. Also included is a capital transfer for school buses. Um this goes to their three oh four uh capital improvement plan of seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is about fifteen thousand two hundred fifty-one more dollars than twenty-five. Um the net increase of all transfers to the public schools over twenty uh five is one million three hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars or six point nine two percent increase. The general fund also supports four million five hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars in school-related debt service. So total transfers and payments for public system, school system are twenty-four million eight hundred sixty-seven thousand seven hundred eleven, and this represents a one point three uh hundred and three thousand eight hundred seventy-two uh dollar increase. Um and when you factor in the total school budget, which is all funds, it's at the capital, which is a cafeteria fund, the school special uh grant funds, um it's seventy-three million four hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars, and that's only an increase of forty-four thousand and ninety-eight dollars or a point oh six percent over twenty-five, but they lost millions of dollars in their school grant funds, which I think was mainly ARPA funds. Um but that is in that special, uh it's not in their operations fund, it's in their special grant funds, which is Fund Two O Six. So if you look at the operating fund, the fund request was sixty-seven uh million eighty thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, which is three million six hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred fifty-five more dollars than was provided in twenty twenty-five. Um the proposed budget that I recommended reduces that request by one million six hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred forty-three dollars. So if you look at their requests by instruction, um they'll have to take each one of those lines and for brevity, I'm not gonna read all of them, but they'll have to reduce those to get that one million six hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred forty-three dollars out of their request. Um as proposed, the school operating fund budget is sixty-five million three hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars, which is an increase of one million nine hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars or three point one five percent over FY twenty-five. So that includes the county money and the state. Other funds, I'm not gonna read all of those here. Um to point out a highlight, um we talked about this, the comprehensive services act fund um hasn't increased in a number of years. It's been two point three million dollars for at least ten, maybe since I've been here. Um but we're, we've had an influx of uh cases in that. Um and and we're gonna be back, might be on this, it's on this agenda for an appropriation because we're over, overspent this year. And you know, that's one of those things that's based on composite index. Um the state's putting in the majority of the money, but we're, we're having to put in more money. Um so we budgeted nine hundred thousand uh more dollars for that total fund. Um most everything else is pretty much the the same, not budgeting as much out of the proffer fund this year. Um that's going to pay debt service, the two sixty-six, eight seventy debt service on Lady Smith Road and from the transportation part of the proffer fund. Um and not as much out of the detention fund. So some of those funds are down, but the big, big increases, uh uh comprehensive services act and uh social services, two hundred sixty-seven thousand there. On the utilities fund, that's increasing about two hundred and seventy-five thousand five seventy to ten million eight hundred one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars. Um Dawn Utility Fund is up about fifty-five thousand dollars to five hundred and two thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars. Um Capital Projects Fund, uh the general fund capital project fund, which I'm gonna go over in another public hearing, but this was in this lot, um is increasing seven hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars to three million four hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars. And the school capital projects fund is decreasing uh eleven million six thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars, which is mainly that financed CMS middle school HVAC and those energy-saving projects that we did throughout the system, some work that we did at the high school. But that was uh financed money in the school capital projects fund. So we're going back down to a level which we've been historically funding in their uh school capital project fund. Um surrounding tax rates, we went over that last time. I'll leave that out and the target date, and we are at the public hearing. Um and we're targeting now June tenth for a budget adoption, but you can go all the way to June thirtieth, but we do have to do something by June thirtieth. And with that, I would turn it over to the public here.
Thank you, Mr. Cully. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak on the proposed twenty twenty-six budget? If you would like to speak on the budget, please come forward at this time.
Good evening. My name's Melanie Johnson, and I'm here representing the Fredericksburg SPCA. We're an organization that works to support the Caroline County Animal Shelter, pet owners and animals who rely on us here in Caroline County. As a community, we all share the responsibility of ensuring the health and safety of people and animals, but the reality is without organizations like the Fredericksburg SPCA, the full weight of that responsibility and all of its costs falls solely on municipal shelters and taxpayers. Every day, our team works tirelessly to provide shelter, medical care, and life-saving programs for homeless and at-risk animals through services such as temporary safe haven shelter until we can reunite pets with their families, subsidize vet care through our clinic so families don't have to surrender or euthanize their pets simply because they can't afford a a vet bill, and we provide pet food and supplies through our pantry, delivering to homebound seniors and those who are sick, injured, or without transportation. We do all of this in an effort to reduce the number of animals entering the Caroline County Animal Shelter and reduce the burden on public services. Our work represents a modest investment with a big return. Tonight, I just wanted to highlight um an important success story we had. Last year in twenty twenty-four, thanks to a grant from the Best Friends Animal Society, we worked with the Caroline and Stafford County Municipal Shelters to implement a life-saving program targeted at reducing cat intakes and euthanasias. As a result, two hundred cats were diverted from those shelters in just one year, and we saw a seven percent decrease in the number of cats surrendered and a thirty-six percent drop in the number of cats euthanized just here in Caroline County alone. These aren't just numbers. They're lives and they're real results that reflect less strain on county resources and better outcomes for both people and animals. Most importantly, it represents a powerful impact we can have when we both work together. Like I mentioned, this pilot program was funded by Best Friends, but its cash equivalent to Caroline County would have been about seven thousand dollars. It's a relatively modest investment, but one that made a huge difference, not just in the lives of the helpless animals that it helped, but in easing the financial burden on taxpayers. I'd like to point out that while overcrowded shelters and high euthanasia rates uh present a large financial burden to the county, they also take a serious emotional toll on the dedicated county employees who have to make difficult decisions every day. So I'm here tonight to ask for your support so we can continue to work with Caroline County Shelter and offer these resources to residents of the county because we can't do it without your support. Your support for this program is a small investment with a big return, and um I hope you'll consider amending the proposed budget to include a modest investment so we can continue our life-saving work here in the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will close uh public com- public comment. Public hearing uh is now, let's see, that takes us up to six. Mr. Cully, you're gonna do a capital improvement? Okay.
All right. Um this will be the public hearing on the twenty-six to twenty thirty capital improvement program, sorry, five-year program. Um the total proposed for FY twenty-six to twenty thirty, um CIP is forty-three million two hundred fifty-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars. The FY twenty-six portion, which is what was in the budget, um and you saw that number a minute ago, three million four hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars. And and this is the general CIP for the general, uh the general government. Um that's a seven hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred one dollar increase over twenty-four, twenty-five. Um how that's funded is proceed from lease finance and three million forty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars, of which the debt service payments are built into the um uh debt retirement fund in the general fund budget. So that that that's planned. Those, I got the numbers from Davenport. Um and then a transfer from the general fund balance of four hundred and three uh thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars. The courts elevators need refurbishing, um and so that would be both buildings. Um the UPS that runs the nine-one-one center, the courts and the tower, we, so the old tower site, there's a cement building there that's full of computer things. We, we turned into a hardened computer room to get it all, so it wasn't all just in one place. Um a GIS server, and included on the left-hand side, you can see what's financed, what's coming from the fund balance, what's financed. Um one of the things that has been asked for by um the commissioner's office and Plan and is Eagle View Cloud Imagery. That's a a software program that provides a a better flown coverage and the software to work it um than what we currently get from the state. That's eighty-six thousand nine sixty-eight, and that does have some ongoing costs moving forward. Um one of the things that's worn out on the radio system, which we purchased when I first got here, is all the microwaves are out of, uh they still work, but you can't get any parts for them. So if they were to break, then we would lose that tower. Um and so I think Hanover's actually in a process of talking to sheriff, updating um the microwaves on the towers there, which remember, we have two on towers in Hanover. So we may have a little bit of savings. Hopefully, we'll save some on that hundred thousand, but that's a quote from, I think, we, the number we've got close to from Motorola. Um also from, that's financed. From the general fund balance, employee restrooms at the solid waste convenience sites, and that's three of those. Um we've already, we're already in the process of doing three. I think I got that right. Um new restrooms at the main recreation park, those will be further up, more toward the tennis courts and the ball fields and the pickleball to move the the further up to where a lot of the people are. That would be financed. That's two, estimated at two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um sheriff's vehicles have continued to increase. Um uh so the the sheriff's replacement schedule, one million eighty-nine thousand five hundred twenty-four, and that's vehicles and equipment to outfit those uh vehicles. Um that would be financed. A roll-off truck, uh you know, we move trash just about seven days a week, um two hundred forty-eight thousand. Amalance fourteen, um and that increased twenty thousand from the start of the budget till this, just a couple of weeks ago, the um the quote that the chief got back. So those continue to skyrocket um from the hundred and thirty, hundred and thirty-nine thousand when I first got here. Um and then uh cash uh from the fund balance to transportation funding. So this is money that um Planet had asked for to be able to start building up money for smart scale matches as we continue to move forward um with various things with the transportation committee. So that's, that's basically moving it from one pot to the other and then would use it as match money if we got uh funded on some smart scale things. So it's sort of one pocket to another to start with because seventy-five's probably not gonna do anything the first year. Overview that would be for utilities. The numbers get bigger. Um the total proposed for twenty-six to thirty is ninety-five million four hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred six dollars uh for just for twenty-six, one million six hundred forty-two thousand one hundred six. That's a decrease of about five hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars from twenty-four, twenty-five. Um it's a transfer from the utility fund balance of six hundred thousand, not from the general fund balance. Um there's actually money, but I, it's hard to believe, but in a fund balance for utilities. Um and then existing utility revenue would fund the rest, one million forty-two thousand one oh six. Those projects are, what are supply well development? Remember, we've sort of funded this well building campaign a couple of years ago, six hundred thousand. Um removal of the high school uh system well building is two hundred and eighty. Um a project in Port Royal that would connect the two county systems. It doesn't affect Port Royal as a town, but remember, we purchased two systems up there um that are just their neighborhoods right next to each other, but none of it's connected. We've installed the meters there, but we need to interconnect, so we have some redundancy from those wells and tanks. Um Rabahannock Water Treatment Site acquisition, three hundred and two thousand. Um SCADA upgrades, a hundred and fifty thousand, and that's an ongoing project. You will see that, um that line is two or three years in in um overall fund. Water meter replacement, a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and Dawn Wastewater Treatment Plant Infrastructure in Maine is about twenty-five thousand. Overview of the schools requested. Schools request twenty-six to thirty is forty-one million twenty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars proposed. Um that's what was requested. Proposed for those twenty-six to thirty is five million eight hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars. And proposed for just twenty-six is that nine hundred and seventy-nine uh thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars that you saw in the regular budget presentation, which is a decrease um from twenty-four, twenty-five. I got that number different, but anyway. Um general fund transfer, staff computers, fifty thousand, classroom technology, fifty thousand, bus replacements, seven hundred sixty-nine thousand eight sixty-two, maintenance and student transportation vehicles, which we, all of those things that we fund every year, and a support vehicle of sixty thousand. So those are the line items that proposed, and it's all just general fund transfer. Yes, sir.
On the presentation, the bus leases were five ninety-nine and some change. Where's the delta?
No, I thought it was five sixty-nine. I think, I'm pretty sure I had to go back to that, but I thought they were five sixty-nine. I may have been talking about the other stuff.
This is some, some purchase with cash.
Purchase with cash is the one that's here.
Previous.
Yes, the leases, that included a bunch of things. Like down here.
Uh six is a down upside down, so yeah, maybe I saw that instead.
I thought these were buses we were buying.
These are the buying.
And then there's still some we're financing.
Yeah, those are the leftover ones that were still, I mean, you, those were like seven, you're right, maybe ten-year leases. So they're, they're fading out. There shouldn't be a whole lot of that left.
Yeah, you're right. It's five, six, nine, eight.
But they're in two places. That's what it is.
Correct. Yeah, the leases are in their operation funds. We just transfer that. They pay the bill. The purchases are in, in, this is Fund Three O Four, which is the school um capital projects fund. They submit us the bill. We pay it in in our finance, but they they go out and get the PO and then pay for it. Total CIP borrowing, sheriffs, fire vehicles, land acquisition, three million forty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Um utilities is zero and school is zero. So that's the total proposed borrowing for the capital.
An engine?
No engine. The only thing he, um he wanted something I cut, but he said he could live with it. Um it obviously needed the amalance because we wear the, we wear the wheels off of those. Uh just for twenty-six, I, it might be things that are future, and Chief Garnett, you're probably gonna answer that, but I can't remember what it was I cut. Maybe a tanker?
No, I was just seeing the, I mean, it's aggravated.
Oh, reserve.
Fire vehicles and land acquisition. I just, you know, is it?
Yeah, well, the sheriff's fire vehicle is actually uh amalance. It was a reserve, a second reserve engine. He said he could wait a year.
That one's probably.
Sorry.
Thank you.
And so you could help, could hold a public hearing on the CIP would be great.
Before you leave, Mr. Cully, may I ask you a question?
Mr. Cully.
I just wanna, I just wanna highlight a couple of things, Mr. Cully. Your, your um general budget CIP, forty-three million dollars was what was requested.
Correct.
But you only were able to award three point four.
But that's over the whole time.
Right. But then, but then the utilities was ninety-five million requested, and you got one point six.
But but of that ninety-five, one, I don't have it in front of me, but the spreadsheet's in your packet. I could get it. I think forty million is um on there as sort of hay mount. And I mean, there's some things that are proffered that are. I mean, I meant it happened, and they're kind of on the plan, but.
I mean, that's, that's more the exception.
Right. Of that forty-three million in general funds, uh there might be public safety bill. There's some things that are just kind of right around on a plan we can't afford to do.
But but the other thing is that for schools, it was forty-one million, and you recommended a little bit less than a million. The, the point really that I want to make is we have a lot of requests for capital improvements. And as our revenue stream, which we expect to increase drastically in the next couple of years, we would be able to knock a little bit more of that off, but right now, it's a little difficult to.
Correct.
Tackle all those things.
Correct. We will have, we should have more cash to be able to do um more things. Plus, we'll have more cash to pay debt service on bigger things. So an increased revenue stream will definitely help our position on school capital, utility capital, and county capital over the next five or six years.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board concerning uh the county administrators' fiscal year capital improvement fund report, please come forward at this time. If any questions or any comments, this is the time to come forward. Seeing none, I'm gonna close this public hearing, and we are on to the next topic. Tax, tax amendment oh one, twenty twenty-five.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh this is a tax amendment for proposed amendment, Mr. Chapter Forty-five, environmental regulations regulating stockpiles. Uh if you recall, we had two discussions on this topic on January twenty-eighth and on March eleventh. Currently, chapter forty-five and section B six prohibits permanent stockpiles and requires the location of all temporary soil storage piles as well as the manner and timing of their disposition to be shown on an erosion settlement control plan. The proposed amendments will strengthen the regulations regarding stockpiles and the disposition of soils from construction or land disturbance activities. The proposed amendments include a definition for temporary stockpiles, minimum criteria for stockpiling and language clarifying that stockpiles may only contain earth and materials from a construction site. So in your packet. I think the was gone. For this slide, but the, the first amendment to the chapters on page three of twenty-six. And section, section G on that page. And it is, it relates to the permanent placement of earth and materials from construction sites from, to a farm or other agricultural uses does not fall under this or any land disturbance exemption. So it simply makes it clear that transferring materials to a farm does not qualify for the egg exemption. That language makes that explicit where now the ordinance does that make that an explicit that you can't do that.
Excuse me, Liam.
Yes.
Mister Sealy has a question before he lose, we lose our spot here.
And it's for Chris McKenzie. Because I understand the wording, though I'm not comfortable with it. It, it just it, it just sounds like you could do it someplace else. Is there, is there a better legal? When it says or any other land disturbance exception?
Page.
It's, Mister Hughes has got it's three of twenty-six. It's the first purple section. It's G.
Yep.
And I, I know we talked about this, this verbiage and I've just it, to me, it sounds like you could take it someplace else in the county, but it's just not covered in this section.
So, well, I just want to make sure I follow. So when, when I read that land disturbance exception, we're talking about, and correct me if I'm wrong. A through L, these are the exceptions. So we're saying the placement of earth and materials from a construction site to a farm or other agricultural use lot does not fall under this or any other land disturbance exception. So that is carved out from these enumerated exceptions that to the term A through L. Does that, I mean, is that, okay.
So there's no, to me, it just reads like there's a loophole, like it could be someplace else.
Okay.
And we've, we've talked about this, Mister Hughes, I know. But the more I read this, the more I was like, does this mean it could go someplace else in the county or not?
It can go, yeah, they can go somewhere else, but they have to go under a plan. The, the reason this language is here is to make it clear that taking it to a farm is not an agricultural use. So you just can't say, um, as a, I have ag land, I just can't accept spoils from a construction site on my farming land and that be included in this exception and these exceptions.
So they cannot.
They cannot.
Okay. It just, it, it just reads strangely to me the way it's written.
It's kind of because it's an exception from the exception. So you have, you, you have to kind of go a couple of layers deep. I, I, I see how that is an issue.
And I read all this and then I was trying to figure out the permutations of where you could take it if you did and it's not covered here, but it's like it was covered somewhere or could be covered somewhere else. And that was my concern. All right. Thank you.
The next change is on page five of twenty-six and it just adds the definition of a temporary stockpile and temporary soil storage piles. And it's, it makes it clear it's a collection of earth and materials as a result of land disturbance activity that is kept for a period of less than twelve months. Manmade materials such as, but not limited to the construction debris, demolition debris and garbage is not permitted in a stockpile. Other amendment and then on page nine of twenty-six.
Mister Hughes.
Yes.
So reading that on five twenty-six, if some soil got mixed in with some asphalt millings and things like that, asphalt millings or chunks of asphalt would be considered manmade and be prohibited to be stockpiled?
Yeah, essentially, yes. So moving to nine of twenty-six, this is where we added the stockpiling criteria. You can see as items one through six, I won't read every one of those, but those are the items that we had discussed before. These items relate to areas that are only approved on the on those plans where they can't be in any utility easements or conservation easements. They show and require stabilization in accordance with the state law. They should not be placed, this was a topic of discussion, no closer than two hundred feet for any existing residential dwelling unit or sites that are three acres or more. Stockpiles may consist of only the materials from the area we talked from the construction site. Has requirements for the maximum slope. It may not exceed three to one with a maximum height of thirty-five feet. And linear berm stockpile should not exceed ten feet in height and not exceed the three one slope. And then the construction slash site plans must indicate the proposed location for stockpiles and include a narrative detailing the phases of stockpiling and decommissioning and disposal of any materials not used on the site. So those six items are added. And then on the next page, ten of twenty-six.
Mister Hughes.
Yes.
Could I just add, Mr. Chairman, I still, I, I still am stuck on the whole residential thing. So we, we have I'll just use Pendleton for example right now. So Pendleton's building houses, house after house after house. I mean, can I have a, can I have an unlimited stockpile in Pendleton? I mean, because it's, I mean, because it says non-residential area. I mean, if three acres, so they aren't three acres. So I can, can I put Mount Pendleton in Pendleton? I mean, I.
You can't put Mount Pendleton in Pendleton, but you can put a stockpile in accordance with the criteria of the height and the slope requirements. And the reason we did it is because in those types of, in subdivision developments, your stockpiles are likely to be within two hundred feet of a residence. This was intended for those really large sites where you would have a considerable amount of dirt. This site, the construction site would be large and you would have more earth to be placed. We wanted to be sure that those stockpiles that were larger would not be that in close proximity to residences. So in an infield development situation like Pendleton or anywhere else, you you would be probably within two hundred feet of a residence. That's why we said, you know, on sites of three acres or more. Because we didn't want to create an imposition on subdivision development.
So, but I can have a stockpile says with three acres or greater. So if it's less than three acres. So I'm just saying like, let's say a developer is going along and he's got a bunch of dirt and he's going along, he's building house after house and he wants three lots. He's just going to put his dirt there. And then he skips three lots and then he keeps on going. He can legally do that, right? So I can have a three hundred foot stockpile or this, I mean, not three hundred, but this, the, within the requirements here, stockpile right next to houses.
Yes. That's, it's a common practice today. I mean, typically on a residential subdivision, your larger prime example, if you go to South River right now, the stockpiles are not placed where they're going to be grading and building homes. They put the stockpiles off to the side. Because like the example you used, you'd have those three houses. They have to have room to work. They had to have, be able to park their construction vehicles, the, get a place for the workers to get. So typically those stockpiles are placed in areas where they're kind of off to the side.
So what happens at the end of, what happens at the end of construction of the subdivision stockpile just remains?
No, it goes away. The ordinance says you cannot have a permanent stockpile.
Okay.
So in their site plan, they have to have a plan that outlines in their narrative how they're going to dispose stockpiles.
Okay. Thank you.
And then on the next page on ten of twenty-six. This is where you all wanted to add the one hundred percent requirement, the bond amount. So it says the bond amount shall be one hundred percent of the removal cost of the stockpile at its largest projected size. So the site plan will come in, they will show what the stockpile may be at its greatest, and then they have to post a bond equal to one hundred percent of the cost to remove that stockpile.
Mister Hughes, Mister Sealy has a question for you.
Item F. The last full sentence. Maintain or remove appropriate conservation measures as required by, is it him or is it applicant or what should that? I don't know that I want it to say him. Well, I missed, I missed that one. So.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And his is right after it. Is that applicant? Is it? I, I don't know who that is.
Yeah, it can be. We could take that to applicant for sure.
I, I'm just trying to make it a little more precise. That's all.
Yeah.
So that's going to change to applicant.
Right.
And those are all the changes.
All right, board. Any questions?
Mister.
Hughes on this, Mister Black.
I got one more. Go back to the subdivision really quickly.
Okay.
So when you say when they're done. Well, I can build ninety homes of my hundreds and then keep the stockpile there for what is to stop me from keeping it there for years so I don't build the last ten?
So the ordinance has one year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone who would like to speak concerning the ordinance changes for the regulation of stockpiles, piling of soils. If you'd like to speak on this issue, please come forward at this time. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Board, how would you like, does anybody want to move forward with a motion on this?
I'll make a motion. We accept it as with the changes.
Do I have a second? A motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, submitted. Text amendment zoning ordinance related to public schools and educational uses. Private schools and educational uses. I for one would like to defer this. I had a lot of questions and and it's going to make us go even later. Does anyone have any problem?
We could open the public hearing and leave it open and then we can come back. That would be my, my suggestion is open the public hearing and then
Close it.
We will leave it open. We'll just
Right.
to the next, we will continue to the next board meeting. So if you'll open the public hearing, Madam Chair.
So we're going to go ahead and take comments and then we'll, we'll move forward and finalizing this one next, at our next meeting. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to, to speak on the zoning ordinance related to private schools and educational uses? Is there anyone who would like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none.
Madam Chair, I make a motion. We leave this public hearing open, continue to the next board meeting.
Second.
If a motion is second, all in favor? All opposed, submitted. Thank you, gentlemen. This brings us to number nine. B D C Lady Smith LLC owner. Who's taking this?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of, members of the board. Public hearing tonight for Flagstop Car Wash, S P E X zero four, twenty twenty-five. The applicant's requesting approval of a special exception permit for an automated vehicle wash pursuant to article eleven, division four, section two point one of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. The subject parcel is located on the south side of Lady Smith Road and is currently under, under development as the Lady Smith Crossing Shopping Center. The site of the proposed vehicle wash is within the shopping center area to be developed and is bounded on the west by one acre of vacant P S C zoned land that has an approved site plan for construction of a four-unit tenant building to be occupied by Dunkin' Donuts. The site is bounded on the east and south by approximately twenty acres of vacant unsubdivided land within the P S C zoned area. And to the east of the undeveloped land is a one acre parcel with a site plan approved for an O'Reilly's Auto Parts. Directly across Lady Smith Road to the north is the existing Lady Smith Sheets and vacant parcels with approved site plans for Wendy's and Argus. The parcel will be accessed via right in, right out entrance from Lady Smith Road and access drive to the south of the parcel with the connection to New Green Road. Both access points are shown on the approved infrastructure plan for Lady Smith Crossing. And this Google Earth image shows that both access points are currently installed. This slide has the image of the applicant's G D P and shows the exit side of an existing Flagstop Car Wash. The generalized development plan depicts a thirty-two hundred square foot single tunnel car wash. The vehicle entrance into the wash tunnel is on the north side of the building with cars moving through towards the south side of the parcel. There are two pay stations located on the north side of the parcel with landscape buffer between the pay stations and the shared use path along Lady Smith Road. After exiting the automated vehicle wash tunnel, vehicles will have the option to exit the site or proceed to vacuum stations provided within the site interior. Each vacuum station will have a designated parking space as required by the zoning ordinance. The site will have an attendant at all times during operation in accordance with the ordinance requirement. The application meets the standards for automated vehicle wash as set forth in article two of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. The site has also been designed in accordance with the highway corridor overlay district standards. The twenty thirty comprehensive plan designates this area as regional business within the Lady Smith Community Plan. Regional business as described in the comprehensive plan would be a district that structures may exceed one hundred thousand square feet. Regulations should encourage planned commercial centers with carefully organized buildings, service areas, parking areas and landscaped areas. Such districts are intended for strategic, excuse me, such districts are intended for strategic locations in relation to population centers and transportation networks where adequate public facilities are established. Public utilities are available to the site. An automated vehicle wash is permitted use within the P S C zone district with an approval of a special exception permit. This use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The planning commission motioned for this application to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Agency comments that were provided have been addressed via the second submission of the G D P. Remaining comments from public utilities, V dot and the Virginia Department of Health should be addressed at the time of site plan. Staff offers the following conditions for the board supervisors to consider if there's a recommendation of approval. The two which shall be recorded in the circuit court. Signage restricting overnight parking shall be placed within the parking area. Hours of operation shall be limited from eight AM to eight PM. And the site will be developed in substantial conformance with the G D P titled Flagstop Car Wash at Lady Smith dated April seventh, twenty twenty-five. And that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
I've got a quick question. It's long.
Mister Thompson.
Mister Pennington, is, is there one of these in Fredericksburg, right on Route two?
Yes.
I'm not personally aware if there is a flag stop in Fredericksburg on Route two.
There's one that looks just like that. I assume it's a flag. I think it's the same one. I think it's the same one.
All right, and they had, I think, we had the discussion with Mister Hughes when he was making the original presentation. They're going to always have an attendant because that attendant is one who makes sure the tires and things are clean, not just he's sitting there doing something else, right?
It's the requirement of the zoning ordinance for it to be manned at all times in operation.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Any other questions for any board members, Mister Black?
That's fine, I just do a quick question on the recyc- can you talk to me, because people right now with potable water is a, you know, I mean, water is an issue in Caroline. So can you just kind of talk to me a little about the recycled water issue or how they plan on addressing that?
Uh Flagstop, the applicant would be better to address that, but their Flagstop does recycle fifty to eighty percent of their water.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask him a bit then. I'll wait for the public hearing to close.
Uh, the applicant does have a presentation, yes.
All right, if you come forward, thank you.
Good evening.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and people can come up after, after you, so you can go first, that's fine. Because she may answer some of their questions and then they won't have to come forward.
Very good, uh good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Mike Rothermell, I'm an attorney with law firm Espasvain in Richmond. Uh, want to introduce who's here with me tonight. Uh, Will Kerr is the CFO of Flagstop. Um, Derek Haynes is uh in charge of operations. Uh, I also have Steve King with Silvercore, he's the civil engineer. Um, so between the three of them, um should be able to answer any questions the board has tonight. Um, also Mister Greenberg is here um representing the owner as well. Uh, we believe that, want to thank Mister uh Pennington and Mister Hughes and staff for working with us. Obviously recognize that this uh required an ordinance amendment um last year in order to, to get us to this point. Uh, so we appreciate um all the work that they've done. Have a very uh short presentation here. Um, obviously, this is, as Mister Pennington said, part of the uh Lady Smith Crossing Shopping Center. Um, I believe this is the first automated vehicle wash under the new uh ordinance provision. Um, so that was allowed as a special exception, permitted use. Uh, and then a, a new definition was created in Article two. Uh, if the board were inclined to approve this application tonight, uh my client hopes to be open uh next spring. So um Flagstop was originally, I want to talk not just about the use, but the user you're going to be getting, because uh obviously my client feels uh that's important to, to highlight. Flagstop was originally founded in nineteen eighty-one. Uh, Jamie Nester, who's the CEO, who unfortunately is out of town tonight, wasn't able to be here. Um, he, he, he joined uh Flagstop in nineteen ninety-four. Um, it's the only job he's ever had outside of working at McDonald's in high school. Uh, he started when it was three locations. Uh, they have steadily um grown to currently twenty-four locations. Uh, they're continuing to grow, uh they go, it's, it's a central Virginia Richmond based company. Um, they have locations far south as Petersburg, far west is Forenville, far east is Kilmarnick. Uh, and then Ashland, which is getting ready to open in the next month or two, would be the farthest location north until hopefully um this site would open in, in Caroline County uh next spring. So they're also very uh proud of um s- the, their, their record and their accomplishments and, and the reputation they've built. They currently have two hundred eighty-five total employees, this particular site will employ fifteen people. There will be three employees on site at all times. Uh, ours would be eight to eight and th- they just recently this year uh made the list of the Times Dispatch uh top workplaces. Uh, the site plan, um again, Steve King can answer any questions, I think Mister Pennington um uh addressed that, but I have this on the list in case we need to, or on, on, as part of the presentation, in case we need to refer back to it. Um, the elevations, these were uh part of the elevations that were included with the application as far as um, you know, the, the proposed building elevations for this particular site. Um, they, they've consistently over the last several years made the, the, a number of um, you know, lists as far as best of Virginia, central Virginia, uh best of Richmond as far as top car washes. And so we uh obviously believe with the surrounding uses, sheets and Wawa, car washes complement those uses very good. Um, very well, and um, you know, so the, given the, the successes of those two businesses, I think um our, our client is excited um about this particular location, we think it's a, a perfect spot for it. Um, that's really all I have. Uh, it, I, I again, happy to answer any questions, have all the people here to address the, the technical questions. And then Mister Black, you want to hear further about the um uh water recycling? So I, I might ask uh Mister Haynes to come up and sort of explain that in detail, he can do a good job in that.
Hey, how are you all? Um, yeah, we recycle about fifty to eighty percent of our water, uh we use a reclaim system. There's four settling tanks that are put on site, uh to settle out all the solids, and then we reclaim all that water in the wash process.
What happens with the solids?
Um, we have a third party that comes out and pumps them out probably every quarter.
Okay, so there's nothing harmful going into our public system at all? Okay. And how do you determine, just out of curiosity, fifty to eighty percent, how is that determined?
Um, based on our, you, you know, all of our nozzling in the, in the tunnel, we, we run an analysis of how many gallons per, per minute we're using. And the reclaim system has a capacity of X amount gallons per minute.
So on a typical car wash, just out of curiosity, I, I think I read it in there already, but um how many gallons, I mean, of day are, are you using of water?
It depends on, on how many vehicles we wash, but.
Right, of course, yeah, on an average day, let's say, I mean, not high, not low, just an average.
It's in the thousands of gallons, for sure.
Per day?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
I, I have a question to Mister Shebel. Um, you can, well, I was gonna say you can motion from there by hand, but since you're coming, a- as, as you approach, he just said he uses thousands of gallons a day on an average day. What's the average house used per day?
Around three hundred gallons a day. Well, depending on, of the time, uh summer usage, typically around three hundred.
Okay, so he's, his project is at least three houses and maybe more since it's thousands?
He said thousands.
Thousand, he said a thousand?
Thousands.
Yeah. Said a thousand or, or thousands?
He said thousands.
Ten thousand a day? So that's thirty-three houses. Okay, thank you.
Did have a question about the, the elevation.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that was my question.
Was that what was proposed to go here in Lady Smith, or is that just an example?
Correct, this, this is um what they're proposing for this particular location.
It's different, all right, thank you. Um, do you know where the location in Ashland is?
Yeah, so I, I, I live uh very close to it, I'm excited for it. Um, it is right at uh off the intersection of Ash Cake Road and Route one, there's the sheets there. So it'll be immediately adjacent to the sheets.
Okay, I know where that is, thank you.
Yep.
Is the one in Richmond at Param and Broad, uh, no, Param and Route one?
There is one near Param and Broad.
Is there one near Param?
Param and Broad. I wouldn't know where the police department is.
But the, the one referenced in Fredericksburg is not a Flagstop, they don't have one in Fredericksburg right now.
Any other questions at this time? All right, at this time, I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
Thank you.
There's anyone who would like to speak on this uh flagship, would you come forward at this time? Flag, what is it, Flagstop, Flagstop, please come forward at this time. Well, it'd be a flagship car wash for us, we don't have one down there. No. All right, seeing none, this public hearing is closed, gentlemen.
One question, probably for the engineer. I, I'm looking at the um VDOT report and kind of confused what this really entails. Can de- have you, can somebody talk about that a little bit?
My name's Steve King with Silvercore, uh will be the civil engineers. I'm not entirely sure I've seen the VDOT report that you're referencing.
I mean, they're talking about a traffic management plan. The entrance outside of the VDOT right of way, we recommend that the entrance is adequate and that the largest designed vehicle can circulate through the site. Um, advisory comment, since the entrance is outside the VDOT right of way, we recommend that the entrance radius width and throat length be labeled. I, I, I don't know what you all have turned into VDOT, I guess is my question, and this is not on a VDOT right of way. As far as I know, Mister Hughes, is that true, this is really a private right now?
The interior road is private, but they do have an access point that connects to, to six thirty-nine. And so VDOT's comments, noted, this is a GDP's, those are comments with a special exception. The site plan will get submitted and VDOT will be the site plan. And those same items that are addressed in that letter will be raised as it's going through the process. So the labeling of the, the radiuses and those things will show up on the site plan as it goes through the process.
I, I'm just surprised they're asking for vehicle trips per day for the proposed use.
That's a standard comment, they all, they ask for vehicle trips for every single project that connects to a VDOT road, they always ask for vehicle trips per day.
Okay, so there's nothing, I, I, I just look at these all the time and wonder we've got these comments, so there's no, there's no site plan approval or site plan? Because we're looking at a site plan in here, technically.
What you're looking at is the, the GDP, it's not to the, to the level of detail that a site plan would be. That's why you get those comments about labeling the, the throat entrances, identifying the number of vehicles per day, because on the site plan all of those items are identified, so when it comes in, those comments should go away. Because the engineer would have seen those and he would know to put that information on the site plan when it comes in.
I, I was just surprised, I thought they would, since this is been around a while, that, just, just a comment, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Was it, nobody else? Gentlemen, if I could ask you, and I, I, I guess the, the attorney may be the one to ask, and then you could ask somebody else, but did you ever provide the county with an economic impact statement?
Uh, we were not asked to, to provide one, so no, we did not.
Okay, who do I ask, well, my question is, I, I guess it's good for you guys, but my question is to staff, who do I ask what the economic impact of this project would be?
So, I mean, I guess how detailed do you want to be, I mean, there's gonna be real estate taxes, there's gonna be sales taxes from the the, you know, a number of users, that's gonna be depending on how frequent the project comes along. I mean, how many customers come through the, the project? So I'm gonna ask them to, we could get with Mark Persoon and see if he can evaluate, but they don't like to speculate on those types of things.
I, I mean, my, my only thing is, and I'm sure somebody else is thinking this too, but I'm providing the water for three hundred houses. Three hundred and thirty-three. And I need to know what the economic benefit is to the county because I'm providing that much water. And I believe when we were here before, we thought, we thought the recycling was eighty or ninety percent. Now we find out it's only fifty percent, so I, I thi- I think I deserve a little more information.
It's a reasonable question.
Unless everybody else feels good about it, but I don't.
I was gonna ask Mister Shebel what size water main has actually been installed, because that should go along with I, I wouldn't think it's that big, I would have thought three, but maybe four.
I would assume it's either an inch and a half, maybe a two inch.
Oh, wow. We're, we all think. Um, so this isn't even a large user in the scheme of things.
It's really not, no, I mean, ten thousand gallons over a period of twenty-four hours, are there hours that they're operating in, is, is fairly small still in, in the big scheme of things.
What am I gonna use at the auto parts store next door, or the Exxon that's exist, are they in the same ballpark?
Than a residence, no, I mean, that's a bathroom, they get used by the employees very, very, literally does, does the public use those type of bathrooms?
What is a VDOT, what is VDOT uh rest?
The rest area.
And they have the flushless toilets.
They use a lot of water.
What size main do they have?
Uh, it's, well, the main going in is larger, but the meters going to each of those is two inch.
Oh, it's only two inch?
So this one is a one inch though?
One and a half.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, in the scheme of what about sheets or Wawa, what size are those fit, what size is that connection?
Inch and a half.
Yeah.
So this is along the same lines as the sheets or Wawa?
Correct, so they'll probably use more water than they do. Um, a, a sheets is typically somewhere around six to seven thousand gallons um compared to this.
Right, right, right. If I'm using, if I'm using, you know, three thousand gallons a day, is that three thousand gallons of fresh water every day, considering they're recycled? Or is it three thousand gallons total every day? And again, I don't think this is gonna generate as much revenue as sheets or Wawa.
So they do have a connection fee, it'll have to be paid on this, by the size of the meter. Um, so it's, you're probably in the neighborhood of between eighty and a hundred and twenty, depending on the size meter that they have, uh that they'll have to pay. And that's for water and sewer. And then you've also got the ongoing utility rate that'll be collected for that also, so from the utility standpoint, there is revenue there.
And real estate, that's a lot of water, okay.
Mister Thomas, if I may, uh Mister Haynes wants to clarify, he, he, the, the number he gave was total amount of water, including recycled water
Right.
that was being used, so the amount of fresh water um being used per day would be more uh closely
Two, five thousand.
Two, two to three thousand gallons. He was adding, he, he was just sort of multiplying the number of vehicles that they um uh expect per day, uh by the number of gallons of water used per vehicle, but that's including the recycled water. So he, he didn't clarify that.
So tell me how much water, how much fresh water do you think you will use? Potable water that we're gonna send to you, because we don't have?
Probably two to three thousand gallons a day.
Okay, so we're down to ten houses?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Okay, all right. Do you think it's possible that you could get us an economic impact statement in a couple of weeks?
We, we obviously will do whatever the board wishes, um Mister Thomas, I mean, obviously you know, w- we were hoping to, to sort of maintain that schedule and, and get the approval tonight.
I'm, I'm, I'm still saying, if you get the approval tonight.
Sure.
Could you still give me an economic impact statement in two weeks?
Sure, and my client's nodding their head, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, you, do you have, I'm gonna ask a question real quick, do you have a, a rough idea, you must have um businesses that are about the same size that have been established, you've got some down in Richmond and all over the place. Um, do you have any idea what your average um gross is?
I think I'll ask Mister Kerr to come up to address that one.
I know that's giving me a lot of fuzzies.
It, it could be proprietary, so we may not.
And Mister Shebel, I was looking for your magic picture on my phone, because I know I've got it in here somewhere. You failed it, okay, we'll get to you, I'll get to you next, yes, thank you for coming up.
Yeah, so I mean, gross revenue numbers, they are a little bit proprietary for us, it's a highly competitive market, right? Um, that said, you know, we, what we provide there is mostly a service, which I believe in Virginia is not applicable to sales tax. What we do, what we do pay to the counties, you know, you What we do, what we do pay to the counties, you know, utility rates, of course, real estate tax, and then also personal property or machinery tax. So the equipment that goes into the tunnel, most, most counties municipalities will tax us on that, right? And that's at least a third of the cost of the whole building. I mean, we put a million dollars of equipment in there, at least. So you got that on top of the real estate tax for the building improvements themselves.
Right, thank you. Mr. Sheba, you wanna share some of the numbers, maybe that'd give us a better light?
Yes, so we worked on some information on how much water do I use? And basically, we went through like a home in Caroline County, so, and it depends on where you live. So average home during summer use in Caroline Pines uses a hundred and thirty-one gallons a day. Compared to Pendleton at three hundred and thirteen, Lady Smith Village at three hundred and fifty-five. So about three hundred is about, if you average them all together, it's actually two thirty-six, but I use three hundred. Tractor Supply, Lady Smith's using two hundred and forty gallons a day. The Value City Furniture uses fourteen hundred gallons a day. McDonald's, two thousand two hundred and ninety-seven gallons a day. The Sheets, three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five. Days Inn, eight thousand five hundred and thirty-four. And then Trader Joe's, thirty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah, but that's a million square feet.
Correct, correct, but just giving you an idea on that. So it's really gonna be more comparable to, you know, a Sheets Wawa hotel.
Yeah.
Correct.
Alright, gentlemen, with regard to the fiscal or the financial impact study or analysis. If you need me to sign a non-disclosure, I'll do that. But I, but I would just like to make sure the county is getting as, as much bang for the buck. And the reason that I asked for you to get it to us in two weeks is for our next meeting. Because I'd like to make sure it's okay. Because if it's not okay, we'll reconsider this motion at the next two, next meeting. Fair? That fair to you?
Well, let me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Okay.
And just wanna make sure he thinks that's fair. Because if we get an economic, an economic impact statement that says they're gonna give us three dollars a year, we're gonna reconsider this vote.
I guess I would just like some additional sort of guidance and exactly what the, the county is looking for.
What you.
Our client to provide.
You estimate what you think the real estate tax will be, what you think the machinery and tools tax will be? You know those numbers, they're your proprietary numbers? And, and you could just call me and give me that? Just, just to make the rest of us feel better? I'll make sure the rest of them feel better if you trust me with your, you know, with your proprietary data.
I guess I'm, Mrs. Law? I guess I'm kinda confused, when have we done this with other businesses? I mean, I think we need to take the data here, I mean, they, I, I don't think we did that for.
We can postpone it, or we can go ahead and do it now?
I, I, I just don't understand, I mean, how many, like, with small businesses and so forth? I understand if we're talking about a large business. But did we get an economic impact statement from Wawa and Sheets? Or do we, do we get one from, you know, Arby's or McDonald's when they come in? You know, I, I just, I'm not sure this is common practice for us.
I'm just asking. Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and, yeah. I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to, to approve the special exception. I'm just asking you to provide me something, that's all.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, submit. Thank you, gentlemen, good luck, Carolina.
I just clarify, that's with the conditions in the packet, right?
Yes. You okay, ready?
Alright, that takes us to.
Welcome to Caroline.
Before we go into the comprehensive plan amendment, we have Aqua. Mr. Black, do you wanna do that one now, or do you wanna do that afterwards?
On ten, ten A, I thought we were after, so we're on ten, so I thought we were after.
Ten A is still a public hearing, yeah, let's do that one.
Yep.
My A's blended in with Aqua. Mr. Hughes, are you getting your stuff together for? Alright, thank you.
I missed her, I apologize, I thought you were going to something else.
That was my mistake, I corrected, we're going to ten.
Ten, ten A is Aqua.
And then we're gonna come back.
Alright, so, good evening, so in two thousand one, George Washington Regional Commission drafted a smaller bicycle and pedestrian plan for the Lady Smith area of Caroline. Along Route One from Campbell's Creek subdivision, south to Lake Caroline subdivision. And along Lady Smith Road from Lake Landor subdivision across Route One to Madison Elementary. The plan is to provide connectivity to the surrounding subdivisions and Lady Smith and Pendleton and Brighterwood South. The Lady Smith Village Industrial Park. The plan included shared use paths along the two major roadways and a combination of paths and sidewalks throughout the subdivisions. And should this plan be incorporated into the comprehensive plan? The improvements may be considered when reviewing development proposals. And when the Virginia Department of Transportation does design for road improvements. The Lady Smith Bicycle Plan was presented to the Planning Commission in October of two thousand twenty-one. Sorry. Was presented to the Planning Commission in two thousand twenty-one. The plan did not move forward at that time because of the volume of public hearing cases being heard during that timeframe. Staff reintroduced this plan to the Planning Commission in February of twenty-seven to twenty-twenty-five. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this plan and sent it to you all for consideration. And just to be brief here, I'll give you some highlights here, you can see here, this is the Lady Smith Plan Study Area. It has some statistics about general Lady Smith area. This is a plan of population density within the Lady Smith area, and you can see it's color coded there. I think this is interesting, because it shows the distances and the close proximity of the areas to be connected. As you can see, South River, down to, back to the retail area. And the Route One, Lady Smith Road interchange there. And then you can see here, the proximity of Lake Caroline and Pendleton. And I think what's interesting to note, it's two miles from Lake Caroline down to Pendleton, I mean, down to the retail area of Route One. The plan also includes recommendations for signage in the area and along the sidewalk network. There are also street scape recommendations within the plan. And here is a shared use path network, and you can see how it is designed to connect the commercial residential areas together. And all of this is, you know, a walkable area. Here it talks about improvements to get pedestrians across some of the major areas along, especially Route One. And these improvements would also include pedestrian refuges, which is, this is an image here of a pedestrian refuge. Especially when you talk about bringing people across Route One. You need an area in the middle of the highway to allow them to have a safe place to stop as, if they get stuck. As traffic is moving by, so. And I will say, this, this is one of the things that was a part of, or will be a part of, the next smart scale application for Route One in the Lady Smith area. Because one of the goals for the Lady Smith area is to try to maintain speeds at a level that allow the area to maintain its walkability. So, and not put in medians down Route One that would prevent pedestrians from crossing. Because when you add those medians, then you effectively increase the psychology of the driver. The design, his speeds go up, they increase. So when you add these types of things, they also act as traffic calming measures as well, so. So there again, this is another map that kinda shows you the layout of the proposed pedestrian accommodations and network. Like I said, connecting all of the neighborhoods via either a path or sidewalk. So this was the last page of the presentation, it talks about next steps. The Plan Commission, as I noted, did recommend approval. And here we are tonight with you all, hoping to incorporate this into the transportation section of the comp plan.
I have questions, but since this is a public hearing, can we go ahead and open it up for public comment? And then we'll go down the board, is there anybody who'd like to speak on this? Anyone who'd like to speak, seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Now, gentlemen, I have questions, like how much is this gonna cost the county?
So right now, it doesn't cost the county anything, so, you know, the goal is that, like I noted, when development proposals come along, if they are along this corridors, these corridors, that we would ask them to make these improvements as a part of their projects. When VDOT comes along with a design for a road improvement, then they would incorporate the pedestrian accommodations or bike accommodations into that design. Now, I will say, that will cost us something, because it increases the cost. However, what is the cost of a life? Because we have, you know, one thing we do in America better than any other country is we kill pedestrians with cars. And so, you know, we've had two fatalities here in Carolina in the last year, people getting hit with cars. And so this is a, an opportunity to help, you know, reduce our contribution to that high number of fatalities. Along Route One.
Along Route One.
Yeah, I will say there's a crossover similar to what they showed in one of the slides on Tidewater Trail. And there have been two or three there, to the point now that they're putting lights. They've got a grant up to, to light that area and put flashes. Because just one set of flashes, it works, I guess what they're gonna go bigger. But anyhow, gentlemen, questions?
My understanding is that VDOT is not in favor of any more lights on Route One. Have you heard the same thing, Mr. Hughes? Because, I mean, Route One, when it's not busy, is great. The minute ninety-five has a hiccup. I, I mean, you can't, you couldn't walk down Route One. I mean, there, there's no place to go in a lot of places there. I just saw this and I was just, and then the other thing that catches my attention is some of these trails go through gated communities. Which, well.
They go to the gated community.
Well, if you look at some of the maps, they go like the backside of Landor. Lake Caroline. I don't know how we do that without a lot of work and a lot of discussion with all those folks. Because we're saying, gonna lay this, I'm, I'm a little skeptical, and I think I was on GWRC when we talked about this. It's, I, I understand what they're trying to do, I just don't know that we have that ability to say, here's where our trails are gonna be.
Well, we do, and, you know, like I said, this is, the trail networks are, would be put in by the private developers. I mean, they're on private property, and so that's how they get put in and how those networks develop.
Yes, Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Hughes, looking at the plan for Route One. This is this kind of a contradiction of what, moving forward, they're thinking about doing down Route One, Route, Route One corridor? In terms of traffic and development and.
I would say, that is a community decision, and I would say, it, it does contradict with VDOT, wanna do VDOT, it wants to do anything possible to keep traffic moving. I would say if the community in Caroline, wants Lady Smith to remain walkable, that's a community decision, and we get to, you know, have that conversation with VDOT. You know, it's not unusual that communities wanna maintain some of their pedestrian accommodations and, you know, village feel.
You're inviting trouble there. I mean, Route One, like I said, as Mr. Sealer said, when it's, when it's backed up on ninety-five, I mean, you've got all day traffic. Down Route One for miles and miles from Fredericksburg back to Richmond. I mean, just constant. And you're, you're getting, about to create another issue. And it's not going to be safe. Safety has to be the first concern, and that is not going to be safe.
Hold, oh, oh, just a second, Mr. Black. I hear what you're saying, Mr. Underwood, but I'm gonna, you know, VDOT's gonna adjust all these things, I guess, as they design. But I think Mr. Black and Mr. Underwood, I mean, Mr. Forehand need to speak, this is their community down there, and I wanna hear what they say first, gentlemen, if you don't mind.
Mine works.
These are blinking like they're getting ready to die. Well, while he's getting that figured out, there are people that walk from Campbell's Creek, from Lady Smith Village, from the trailer court that I can't remember the name of, off the top of my head. Constantly, and I think it would be a wonderful thing to give them a safe place to walk. Because right now, they're having to walk just a mere inches off the roadway. If we could do something like what we've done along Lady Smith Road on the south side, where we have like a five to six foot wide asphalt path. I don't know if the landowners will ever put that in, but if it's never planned for, it never will happen. But, I mean, they're walking to the grocery store on a daily basis, up and down, in front of Lady Smith Village, from Campbell's Creek and from, and from that trailer court to, to Food Line, so. I would, I would, yeah, I would kind of agree with Mr. Forehand, and then in addition, Mr., I know that Mr. Howard has talked about the fact that people, that basketball courts in Lady Smith. There's been concerns about, you know, when I have meetings with, in the, you know, the Parks and Rec, about people coming down Route One to go play basketball at those courts from Campbell's Creek. Our communities would love to have it, I, I think this is a great idea, that's not really gonna cost us anything, because of the fact that when projects happen. I mean, it will obviously cost us down the road. But when projects happen, you put sidewalks in, people want to be able to bike and a walk safe between community and community. So I think it's a good idea, it was put together by GWRC, and, and I'm very much in favor of it.
Mr. Hughes, the, when GWRC finishes with this design, they'll bring it back for a presentation or not?
No, no, this is a public hearing to adopt. So the, the plan is a concept plan, and so, you know, every line you see on this, this dot is not gonna be an exact location that, that you have in your plan. But what happens is, when development projects come along, we have this doc, we have this plan in our comprehensive plan. Then we can ask the development community to help us implement the plan. That becomes part of their mitigating participation in their request. And so it's not something that we are arbitrarily asking for, it is a plan that we've adopted as a community, that we wanna have pedestrian accommodations. And that the development community recognizes that, and so they make those improvements according to the, to the plan. It's just like our transportation plan. If we have roads shown on our transportation plan, we, we like to get right-of-way dedications or even those improvements by the development community. It should be, these types of improvements and accommodations should be in your comp plan. It should be, these types of improvements and accommodations should be in your comp plan so that it's not an arbitrary request of the development community and that they understand what the community's goals are. That is, the purpose of the comp plan is to help implement these types of plans. So, you know, the 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 comment about safety, this is a plan to make walking safer.
Yes.
Along Route One and along those other roads. I mean, like I said, we have two fatalities on Route One. We have a a tap application in right now to for pedestrian accommodations on two oh seven from Route One up to Welcome Way Drive. Because there's a lot of pedestrian walking along there. And so we have a lot of people walking in Carolina County, and we don't have any accommodations for them right now. And as we.
Madam Chair, I'm I'm not opposed to sidewalk. But I'm opposed to people being 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 part of the traffic movement on Route One. If it's a separate sidewalk, that's something different. But the picture here shows people on the highway. I don't want that kind of pathway. I want the pathway, I want the pathway that that is separate from the road. I don't have an issue with sidewalk. But when you're putting people on the road with vehicles, you're asking for trouble.
And I agree with you a hundred percent. And that's why, if you look at what is done on six thirty-nine, when they did the improvement, they came up with a shared use path. And so that's why the path is there versus a sidewalk. In a community like Caroline, paths are much more in tune with the character of the community versus a sidewalk. Sidewalks are typically typically in high density places. And, you know, like in a subdivision, in a more urbanized area. But in a more rural community like Caroline, what you typically see are shared use paths. I mean, like, that's why there's a shared use path on the six thirty-nine side. There is some sidewalk on six thirty-nine, but that's in front of the businesses where there is a short distance between business to business. But where you're trying to move pedestrians and bicycles, you know, some distances, that's where you see the paths. And so when you see on Route One, you know, there would be a shared use path. It would be set back three foot shoulders, five foot distance, typically eight to ten feet off of the backside of the curb. And then it's typically, the VDOT design is a ten foot pathway. So, I mean, there there is, there is sufficient and significant separation from pedestrians and cars. And in terms of crossing Route One, and like Mr. Sealer said, VDOT does not want to see traffic lights on Route One. And you can safely move people across Route One without having traffic lights. I mean, it's done in more urbanized areas where there have high speeds. In Northern Virginia, even in Henrico County where I live, there are pedestrian accommodations across Route One. You know, and so you have a posted forty-five mile an hour speed limit. And I guarantee you, the majority is, the average speed is probably fifty-five or sixty. But you see people getting across safely because of the signalization that goes in, because of the pedestrian refuges, so.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we approve the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand thirty Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the smaller area bicycle and pedestrian plan for Lady Smith area.
All right, we have a mo- motion, Mr. Ted, Mr.
I'll, I'll second it, but I had a question for Mr. Hughes, so if I can have.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Hughes, when you said no signals, would it be something like the flashing lights in front of the Bowling Green Food Line? So you could cross, or people would know?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there there are, there are a number of signalized apparatus that VDOT can put in to assist pedestrians. You can do the flashing signals.
Cause it that'll at least warn people that they're pedestrians up ahead and trying to cross and
Yes.
you know, hit the brake and not the gas. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to accept. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, that takes us to the end of our public hearings. We need to go to Aqua.
Yes, if if you don't mind, I sent some photos to Mr. Parton today. And this was just a few of the, and I know this is not gonna be a shock to any of you, but there's probably about five or six pictures from different constituents of what they were dealing with over, and this was, there's ten wells in our community that Aqua serves. Uh, and this was what people were dealing with from different, these are from different homes across the community. I live on the what they call the Landor side, but these are from both the Landor and Heritage Side of Lake Landor. So this was, um, this was widespread. Uh, we had no communication from the company until this afternoon. Uh, and so these, like I said, these are different households. Uh, and someone's laundry there, what it looked like, you know, before and then after it had gone through. So that's actually my house taken at different times. That was probably about an hour to two hours apart. Uh, different after flushing for ten minutes, you can see it got better. It goes from right to left. That was the first sample and then going from, you know, then the second sample looked better, then the third sample and the fourth sample. So that was yesterday. Uh, that was yesterday during the day, and and I only experienced it for about twenty-four hours. Whereas other residents experienced it longer than I did. The company did send out something today after I had discussions with the State Corporation Commission and the Department of Health. I did email the president of the company. And I have had no response from Mr. Albach in any way, shape or form as to what, this was a Memorial Day weekend, and as you can imagine, in a late community, people have lots of visitors. And this was not a pleasant situation for people to be dealing with at all. You couldn't shower, couldn't drink, couldn't couldn't do your laundry. So what I would ask, if the board is okay, is that either Mr. McKenzie or Mr. Parton draft a letter on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to the State Corporation Commission, to Aqua Virginia, and to the Department of Health. Kind of explaining our complete displeasure on their lack of communication, uh, lack of, uh, lack of quality when we're dealing with, and we learned today too. The other thing too is we learned that they will be filing for yet another rate increase sometime this summer. So I just don't understand how we can justify rate increases when this is the, uh, this is what they're dealing with or this is what they're producing to the customer. So that's all I could think of at this time to deal with them. But if that's okay with the board, I would like a letter sent that would be signed by Chairman Long explaining our complete displeasure with the, um, lack of response, caring and, um, quality of what they are serving to the residents in Lake Landor.
And I will gladly sign it.
Yep.
Are you gonna send pictures with it?
Yeah, I mean, we can, yeah, we can gladly include the pictures.
It ought to go to the State Corporations Commission and ought to go to, um.
Of E D H, yep. They're coming out on Thursday. E D H is coming out on Thursday to do testing in various areas throughout the, um, the the Department of Health. Drinking and water is coming out Thursday to do random testing in Lake Landor. What's that? Yeah, yeah, no, I, it's, that's, that could be one too. So if that's okay with the board, we can include pictures too.
I would include pictures, because you need to send it to every member in the State Corporation Commission, not just.
Yep, anyone that you can, Mr. McKenzie, anyone that we know, if we can send it to delegates too, anyone that this is, I mean, anyone in the food chain that can help us would be greatly appreciated, state senators.
How about any of the counties or towns that have Aqua water, just letting them know that it happened?
Yep. So do we need a motion for that or?
Yeah, the, just on the last one, Ms. Long, there there are a lot of jurisdictions, so that would just.
You can leave that out.
Okay.
You know, I just want to ruffle their feathers.
Well, yeah, I think they all, they probably all sent similar letters, at least judging from the last rate case that we all, that we participated in. So we will prepare that letter based on this guidance. And I I can, I can provide a draft to Mr. Black to make sure it's tracking with what you're asking and and then send it to you, Ms. Long, for review and signature.
Thank you. Mr. Cully, call me when it's ready or Alan, and I'll come up and sign it.
Thank you.
Mr. Cully. Staff's gonna kill me if we take a quick five minute break, aren't they?
No, no, staff's, staff's, staff's here.
Do you need a break? Stretch my legs.
Whatever we want, yeah.
Five, five Earth minutes. Not supervisor minutes, not out the back door minutes.
So we need to add that too, if that's what y'all ultimately decide you're gonna do.
Is, okay.
But I want to see something from the school board that they are gonna let us do that because to thi- to this point, we've been told no. And I mean, I want to see a motion voted on by the school board and sent to us. We've had this discussion several times and we've been told, no, no, no. And I'm looking from all the folks that I've talked to that this is, this has been their concern for a long time.
Okay. Is there?
I don't, I don't, I'm saying that they meet, they meet in two weeks. They can send us a motion and say, you guys can build the gym and the classrooms.
The, the problem is, is that, um, they, they for the, for the trailers, because this is gonna include the trailers for temporary, like they needed it tonight. That's the issue. So, I mean, I guess my question is, uh, you know, if, if we would need something, I mean, we're, we're the, we're the funding mechanism. In the end, we can say where you're gonna build it.
Except that we're not the funding mechanism if we vote for something. They own the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gentlemen of the board. Thank you. First of all, we, we do have a gym in Madison. It's a, it's a gym. It has basketball goals, it has everything. It can be used for other things, but it is a gym. So to say that we don't have a gym in Madison is not,
Okay.
it's not true. Uh, what we need, obviously, is the trailers because that's the space that we need. If the board feels that they can't do that, uh, then we need authorization to make use of our year-end funds to do that. And the last thing I will say is if, if you want to put rooms on a school, it's your money. You can put rooms on a school if you.
Mr. Taylor, it is your building and I've been escorted out of it before by the superintendent, not that many years ago. So I know who owns the property. I called the sheriff and he said it's their building. They can do what they, what they will with it and the sheriff's sitting right back there and so is the, his, his senior deputy and they'll tell you the same thing.
And as I'm saying,
We can't do anything then.
We need the use of our
But, but, but you're saying.
Year-end funds.
You're saying right now that
I'm saying that.
That we could add on if, if we wanted.
If this is what you want to do, you will be able to do that.
Okay. So that's a guarantee that if, if we want to add on to Bowling Green and Madison, you're giving us permission to do that.
Let me just make sure I have the support of my board. I think I do. But, uh,
Mr. Taylor, I really want a motion and a, and a, a signed, sealed and delivered situation.
Mr. Black. They can't, they have good lines to get together and make up.
Well, first of all, we, we're not in a meeting now, so we, we can't do that. But, I'm asking you to take my word that if you want to add on to Bowling Green, we're not gonna say that you can't do that. We just need authorization from you now to use our year-end funds. And if we do some type of, uh, memo, uh, uh, an understanding, a memorandum, a memorandum of understanding, we would like for that to include commitment to a new school as well.
Yeah, that's, I think that's what we said at the joint meeting a minute ago is, we're all committing to a new school. Adding on to Bowling Green or, or if we had to Madison to improve their facilities does not stop a new school from happening. And, and I definitely agree with Mr. Underwood in, in the statement he made that after we make these additions and then we build a new school, we have good facilities in every part of the county for the most part, which is what we all want.
And again, if we could get something in writing that commits the board to a new school, then we certainly would have no issue with you adding on to the present schools that we have.
Excuse me, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah.
Uh, you've got four board members here and I know you can't, you can't vote because you're not in a meeting, but if they would, if you all, if the four board members would, would give us, yes, this is what we agree to do, I will ask the board. But.
But he, Mr. Mr. Taylor's given us his word as the chair of the board that he believes that's gonna happen.
Mr. Thomas, when they were in session, I asked for this very thing and they told me no.
And, and that's what, and I heard that. So that's what's gotten us just.
And that's why I want a motion and I want something from them that, that sign that says we can do those things because we asked, I asked, and you, I was told unequivocally, no.
Well, I, I don't know who said that.
You were, Mr. Taylor, you were the chairman. We were just in that meeting. We can go rewind the tape, but I was told no.
And I'm not saying what you were told. I'm, I'm saying that.
And that was the whole board.
Yeah, well, I'm saying.
Well, if, if I can, we are, we are at an impasse because it appears, and, and it's, it's time to just be frank and honest about it. It appears that there's, there's not a lot of trust in a new school being built. And there's not a lot of trust on the other side of what's gonna happen. So I'm gonna extend my olive branch and say, I believe the school board is gonna do what you just said. I'm also gonna be in favor of Mr. Black's motion to let you use your funds and also lets us add on to Bowling Green. And, and Madison, if that's determined, that's the final thing. So you got an olive branch, hopefully we got an olive branch and we can move forward and be productive.
I just need something so that we have papers to sign.
We're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna make a motion and say you can use your old, your existing funds if that's what the motion turns out to be.
So, I guess we'll need a, this might get complicated.
If y'all could give us a moment, please.
All right, appropriate. So I guess my motion will be to appropriate the school's excess funds to be able to buy trailers and.
Reversion funds.
Version, yeah, appropriate the reversion funds. Twenty-four, twenty-four and. Okay, we may need a, we may need it, we may need a detailed motion on this then. All right.
Miss.
Go ahead, Mr. Cully, because I, I mean, you're throwing a million.
Appropriate the, the money that was, uh, left over for twenty-four, which was ninety-four thousand. And we know that it's in the audit. The audited, the audited leftover money in the school fund that, that, um, came back to the general fund and appropriate that to fund three oh four, their capital improvement fund for the trailers, learning cottages.
Okay.
Yeah, nine hundred thousand ninety, yeah, I think ninety-four is the end number, nine hundred ninety-four. Thank you. Nine hundred, that's so small, I can't see it. Ninety-four thousand, what, six oh seven, something like that. And it's, that's very small.
Nine ninety-four six oh seven.
Nine, nine ninety-four, six oh seven.
Okay. I have, I've, is, Mr. Cully, is the, the motion that Mr. Cully suggested, um, I'm in favor of that. Plus in addition, I guess that would mean, um, adding money for additions to, um, Bowling Green, uh, for a gymnasium and additional classrooms as well as additions to Madison, what is, what is needed there.
County-funded.
County-founded, yeah. And, and down the road, a new school, a new elementary school.
Thank you.
You're adding Madison to the, uh, RFP.
Yes.
Mr. Cully, this, Mr. Black said you had a motion. I'd like to, to hear it complete. I want to make sure we are clear on the questions.
Move to appropriate nine hundred ninety-four thousand, what, what, six hundred and seven dollars, the audited amount of leftover funds from twenty-four in the school operation fund to fund three oh four to school capital projects fund for the purchase or lease, however they determine, uh, unless you're determining that for the learning cottages, six classrooms, the bathrooms, as shown on the plans at the work session, along with then for us, adding Madison, uh, into the design RFP that's already added the other things that you wanted to do last time for, uh, a wing of classrooms and a, a gym if it's determined a gym is needed.
Mr. Cully.
Can we just separate these? Just make it simple. Just do the trailers and then talk about everything else then. Well, I think they, I think they all want it wrapped in, so that way it's guaranteed.
Is there any, is there any way to add into that, that?
Yes.
Um, the board, the county is allowed to do additions to, um, to Bowling Green and to Madison?
That's just a statement. Because that's a motion they would have to make.
Right. So how do we? I have Mr. Taylor's word, which I would take, but I know that won't hold up in, in a court of law. So if we get into a bickering bit, uh, match on this, so anybody got any words of wisdom?
It's, it's, yeah, it'd be just in the record tonight's meeting that the chair had said that was the case. It would take us a while to start spending money with design, so hopefully we'll maybe get a letter or something from them that officially memorializes that, but.
And if we don't get a motion, if we don't get a motion from them, it's.
Right, you can't, you know.
You can't do anything without a motion.
You've got four people to tell us.
They can't do, they can't do anything here tonight.
They, they meet again before we meet again.
Right. We could, we could give you that. We, we can't do that. We're not in a meeting. But we could do what you need to do at our next meeting. But we need this, we need permission from you tonight so that we can go ahead with the.
Feel that they can't do that. Uh, then we need authorization to make use of our year-end funds to do that. And the last thing I will say is if you want to put rooms on a school, it's your money. You can put rooms on a school if you.
Mr. Taylor, it is your building and I've been escorted out of it before by superintendent. Not that many years ago, so I know who owns the property. I called the sheriff and he said it's their building. They can do what they, what they will with it. And the sheriff's sitting right back there and so is the, his, his senior deputy and they'll tell you the same thing.
And as I'm saying.
We can't do anything then.
We need the use of our.
But, but, but you're saying. You're saying right now that.
I'm saying.
That we could add on if, if we wanted.
If this is what you want to do.
Okay.
You will be able to do that.
Okay. So that's a guarantee that if, if we want to add on to Bowling Green and Madison, you're giving us permission to do that.
Let me just make sure I have the support of my board. I think I do. But, uh.
Mr. Taylor, I really want a motion and a, and a, a signed, sealed and delivered situation.
Mr. Black. They can't, they have good lines to get together, make up.
Well, first of all, we, we're not in a meeting now, so we, we can't do that. But I'm asking you to take my word that if you want to add on to Bowling Green, we're not going to say that you can't do that. We just need authorization from you now to use our year-end funds. And if we do some type of a memo, uh, 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 an understanding. A memorandum, a memorandum of understanding, we would like for that to include commitment to a new school as well.
Yeah, that's, I think that's what we said at the joint meeting a minute ago is we're all committing to a new school. Adding on the Bowling Green or, or if we had to Madison to improve their facilities does not stop a new school from happening. And, and I definitely agree with Mr. Underwood in, in the statement he made that after we make these additions. And then we build a new school, we have good facilities in every part of the county for the most part, which is what we all want.
And again, if we could get something in writing that commits the board to a new school. Then we certainly would have no issue with you adding on to the present schools that we have.
Excuse me, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah.
Uh, you've got four board members here. And I know you can't, you can't vote because you're not in a meeting, but. If they would, if you all, if the four board members would, would give us, yes, this is what we agree to do. I will ask the.
But he, Mr. Mr. Taylor has given us his word as the chair of the board that he believes that's going to happen.
Mr. Thomas, when they were in session, I asked for this very thing and they told me no.
And, and that's what, and I heard that. So that's what's.
And that's, and, and that's why I want a motion and I want something from them. That, that sign that says we can do those things because we asked, I asked, and you, I was told unequivocally, no.
Well, I, I don't know who said that.
You were, Mr. Taylor, you were the chairman. We were just in that meeting. We can go rewind the tape, but I was told no.
And I'm not saying what you were told. I'm, I'm saying.
The whole board.
Yeah, well, I'm saying.
Well, if, if I can, we are, we are at an impasse because. It appears and, and it's, it's time to just be frank and honest about it. It appears that there's, there's not a lot of trust in a new school being built. And there's not a lot of trust on the other side of what's going to happen. So I'm going to extend my olive branch and say, I believe the school board is going to do what you just said. I'm also going to be in favor of Mr. Black's motion to let you use your funds and also lets us add on the Bowling Green.
Thank you.
And, and, and Madison, if that's determined, that's the final thing. So you got an olive branch. Hopefully we got an olive branch and we can move forward and be productive.
Well, I just need something so that we have papers to sign.
We're, we're, we're going to, we're going to make a motion and say you can use your old, your existing funds if that's what the motion turns out to be.
So I guess we'll need a, this might be get complicated.
What's that? If y'all could give us a moment, please.
All right, appropriate. So I guess my motion will be to appropriate the school's excess funds to be able to buy trailers. And what's that?
Reversion funds.
Version, the, yeah, appropriate the reversion funds. Twenty-four, twenty-four and. Okay, we may need a, we may need it. We may need a detailed motion on this then. All right. Um. Go ahead, Mr. Colley, because I, I mean, you're throwing a million.
Appropriate the, the money that was, uh, left over for twenty-four, which was ninety-four thousand. And we know that it's in the audit. The audited, the audited leftover money in the school fund that, that, um, came back to the general fund. And appropriate that to fund three oh four, their capital improvement fund for the trailers, learning cottages.
Okay.
Yeah, nine hundred thousand ninety, yeah, I think ninety-four is the end number, nine hundred ninety-four. Thank you. Nine hundred, that's so small, I can't see it. Ninety-four thousand, what, six oh seven, something like that. And they see, that's very small.
Nine ninety-four, six oh seven.
Nine, nine ninety-four, six oh seven.
Okay. I have, I've, is Mr. Colley, is the, the, the motion that Mr. Colley suggested. Um, I'm in favor with that. Plus in addition, I guess that would mean, um, adding money for additions to, um, Bowling Green. Uh, for a gymnasium and additional classrooms as well as additions to Madison, what is, what is needed there.
County funded.
County funded, yeah. And, and down the road, a new school, a new elementary school.
Thank you.
You're adding Madison to the, uh, RFP.
Yes.
Mr. Colley, this, Mr. Black said you had a motion. I'd like to, to hear it complete. I want to make sure we are clear.
Move to appropriate nine hundred ninety-four thousand, what, what, six hundred and seven dollars. The audited amount of leftover funds from twenty-four in the school operation fund. To fund three oh four to school capital projects fund for the purchase or lease, however they determine. Uh, unless you're determining that for the learning cottages, six classrooms, the bathrooms as shown on the plans. At the work session, along with then for us, adding Madison, uh, into the design RFP that's already added the other things that you wanted to do last time. For, uh, a wing of classrooms and a, a gym, if it's determined a gym is needed.
Mr. Mr. Colley.
Separate these, just make it simple. Just do the trailers and then talk about everything else then. Well, I think they, I think they all want it wrapped in, so that way it's guaranteed.
Is there any?
They wanted it.
Is there any way to add into that, that?
Yes.
Um, the board, the county is allowed to do additions to, um, to Bowling Green and to Madison.
That's just a statement.
That's just.
That's a motion they would have to make.
Right. So how do we? I have Mr. Taylor's word, which I would take, but I know that won't hold up in, in a court of law. So if we get into a bickering bit, uh, match on this, so anybody got any words of wisdom?
It's, it's, yeah, it'd be just in the record tonight's meeting that the chair had said that was the case. It would take us a while to start spending money with design, so hopefully we'll maybe get a letter or something from them that officially memorializes that, but.
And if we don't get a motion, if we don't get a motion from them, it's.
Right, you can't, you know.
You can't do anything without a motion.
You've got four people to tell.
They can't do, they can't do anything here tonight.
They, they meet again before we meet again.
Right. We could, we could give you that. We, we can't do that. We're not in a meeting. But we could do what you need to do at our next meeting. But we need this, we need permission from you tonight so that we can go ahead with the. Purchasing of the trailers.
Okay, I've got a, then let's go ahead and call the, let's go ahead and call the question for tonight. Um, I've got a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Can you, can you restate your? Oh my gosh. Mr. Colley, can you go ahead and?
I try to take guys, I'll give Mr. Colley a break, but so it's a two-parter. First part, motion to appropriate the school's money left over, nine hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred and seven dollars.
A second.
That's the audited amount left over from twenty twenty-four to fund three oh four capital improvement funds for the learning cottages. Plus you want to add Madison to the design RFP.
And we wanted to start construction at Bowling Green.
Bowling, Bowling Green is already in the RFP.
No, 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 start construction at Bowling Green.
Okay, so this was, this would be a part three. But.
No, I, I thought that's what you said, right?
Fine with that.
That's what you said originally, so.
I'm fine with that.
And we move forward. We're not going to move forward in two weeks. And in two weeks or a little more than two weeks, the school board will meet on Monday and then the board of supervisors will meet again on Tuesday. Mr. Taylor said they could give us that approval in the next meeting.
Okay, so the, and so the third part of the motion then is for the, the, the board to authorize. Construction at Bowling Green Elementary. But we, we, that will need you, you need to get school board approval first, but you're waiting for that to come. Or you, the board takes any action. I'm just trying to think of how to articulate that into the motion.
No, our, our motion is basically dead if they tell us no.
Well, see, that's the, because they're, they're going to commit if they, with this motion, they're going to sign these leases.
They're, they're going to commit to their part. We're committing to their part. They have to commit to our part or we're asking them and trusting them that they'll commit to our part. That's all it is. We're extending the olive branch because we're, you know. We're at the peace table in Paris and this just goes round and round and round until somebody says, let's move.
And I must say, it, it hurts me that past history. Has created this bit of this trust. Um, and puts me on, you know, sort of a seesaw ride. You know, you, you want to trust it's going to happen, but history sort of says sometimes that doesn't happen. Or people say, well, we didn't say that. And you know, as a lawyer, that that happens all the time, so. They have to have the agreement tonight. But yet they have, we don't have an app, they've already adjourned from their meeting, so they can't reconvene.
They can't, they cannot vote.
So I have not, and during the meeting. When we said something about additions, we got absolutely no. Response from the, from the board as, as far as them wanting us to do that. So, um. I'm just looking for somebody to, to be a pe- peacemaker and, and write these accords so that we can all go home happy and our kids have. Trailers and, and future constructions.
You're right.
I, I did not second, I seconded after I got to the point where I thought I needed to stop, but I didn't second the whole thing.
So I, I was just talking to Mr. Colley and I think the plans, we don't have clear plans on the Bowling Green construction. We would need to get more clarity on exactly what's being constructed at Bowling Green.
The gym and, uh, four to six classes.
Right. I think we only, they only have plans for two classrooms right now. So we need. The old plans are two classrooms. We need to have new plans drawn up.
We thought it was six and they clarified that it was four.
Okay.
Yeah. Two classes in Bowling Green is all we need. Right, the old plans. And we're saying four now. Well, we have to create the plans.
So.
But they're going to give us permission. We're not going to have any plans or turn the shovel for months. But getting past this point is all we need to do to give them trailers and give us a chance to start adding the Bowling Green. That's all. We, we're never going to get a chance to add to Bowling Green until they say yes. And they have said they would say yes at their next meeting.
But they said, no, my point is, is I point blank asked. And I was, I was told no.
And, and many times like our board has a no vote, we've come back and reconsider it.
Well, I'm willing to reconsider it after they do a motion, send it to us. After their, after their next meeting, they, they met tonight, we had an opportunity. And, and I've asked for this and this isn't even the first time I've, I'm asked at three separate facility meetings for this. And what we end up with at Bowling Green again is trailers. That, that doesn't facilitate what we need at Bowling Green. I, I'm sorry.
But if we have an opportunity to expand Bowling Green, we can significantly reduce the time trailers are there.
Right. Let me start.
But, but they, but they have not, nobody on the school board has given us that opportu, given that. As, as an option that we've been told no three times in a row and have asked it at three different meetings. And, and I'm sorry, I've asked and I've been very, very. Point blank and, and this is what I've been asked for by, by multiple citizens. My whole district goes to Bowling Green Elementary.
May I, Madam Chairman?
Worked on it.
I have no idea, Mr. Sealy, what you're talking about. I'm saying to you, if Bowling Green wants to do additions, if they want to do additions on Bowling Green Schools. We have no issue with you doing that. I don't know who told you no. But I've certainly been the chairman since January. I know I have not told you no. Uh, and, and then by the same token, when we are talking and things come up all of a sudden. Sometimes you don't even know all of the issues. Uh, you don't even know, you can't answer a question until you understand fully what the question is. But what I'm hearing tonight is that the board wants to add on to Bowling Green. Classrooms in a gym. We have said as a board, you can do that. We also need a motion that gives us our year-end funds tonight. So that we can, right, we have no intentions of coming back saying we got the trailers now. You can't add the rooms. That, that would just be pure stupid.
All right. So what, what's one last time, um, go over the motion that we've been on the table so we can vote on it one way or another. So, I mean, because we're, we're going round and round here, so we need, we need a, we need a motion, otherwise we're going to have to come back and.
We, we are, and I have a quick question for those of you that are just heard this, what Mr. Taylor said. And Jeff, enough, I have a right to ask a question. I just want to make sure that if you are opposed or disagree with anything that Mr. Taylor just said. I want you to stand up and show me right now.
Will you please, she's trying to get a vo, a board to vote and you can't do this.
No one's going to vote, the, the, the board can't vote. They, they can't take action.
Right.
If you're asking individual board members, you're, you're pulling informally consensus for them. It's, it's not in any way binding. I mean, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to let this dialogue happen, but there's, the fact of the, the fact of the matter is there's no. They, they, they can't do anything that would anyway bind them. So anything, anything you heard from them tonight would be legally annulity.
Right.
Um, so it probably isn't that much consolation for you, but this, but I'm, this is your process and I don't, I'm not trying to get in the middle of it. Um, so I mean, that's, that's the situation. And I think we've got parts one appropriation, parts two addition of Madison to the RFP clear. The question is, is there a part three regarding Bowling Green? And if so, what does it say? Because right now it's very general.
Part three was to give the county permission.
But the, the, but the, so we can't, that's, it's the same thing. We'd like, they can't give it until they vote on it. So your motion is only your action.
Right, right. But, but okay, so our action would be for the county to move forward. With, with additions to Bowling Green if, and, and the gym and four classes. If given permission by the school board.
Right.
To move forward.
Okay.
That should be your motion.
Right, well, we can, we can leave that if in there.
You have to because we can't, we can't take action tonight. Well, we don't, we can say, we only can say what we will do and it's a if.
Correct.
If they give us permission and your, your, your motion should say, if they give us permission to move forward, then. X, Y, Z. Or, or. If has to be included because it can't be a final statement. No, we can say we could do it, but if they don't give, give us permission, we can't do it. So we could put your if in there. I'm trusting them. Like I said, we're, we're putting out the olive branch, but I'll put an if in there if we want to. If that's the, that's the general consensus of the board.
Okay, so, so I'll restate.
The county will move forward with addition of four classrooms and a gym at Bowling Green. Providing the school board gives us permission at their next meeting as stated by the chair.
Okay, so that's part three. The, so part one, appropriate a little over nine hundred thousand left over from twenty twenty-four to this year. Part two, add Madison to the services RFP. Part three, expansion at Bowling Green as articulated by Mr. Thomas, if approved by the school board at their next meeting.
Moving forward, right.
That, that's the motion. It has not been seconded.
And, and none of that affects the fact that we intend to do a, build a school later. I thought Mr. Forehand was seconding it. Or you're not.
I got a question because he said something that, we had been talking about four to six, so you, you're now taking that RFP down to four?
Four is what they had in the last thing, wasn't it?
No, it was two. No, the original, the, what I've been told was the original that didn't get done was two classrooms in a gym. We've been talking for several weeks, maybe a month, four to six in a gym. So I just trying to get straight.
Newspaper article where we actually got a six hundred thousand dollar change order was for six classrooms in a gym. While we were doing the addition, while we were doing additions to Bowling Green Elementary.
Did they draw that?
They didn't. That was the proposal. It was never drawn.
Okay. What are we doing now with the RFP? This is my clarity. Was it four or is it six? That, I've gotten confused. Right, four, two, six.
Four, two, six.
Good.
That's the motion.
Can you make a contingent motion and vote?
And so that's, I mean, I think that's the important thing is that the, the, the funding appropriation, the, no, nothing's contingent in here.
It's an if then.
But it's, it, but it just means.
I know.
That if, if they don't vote for it, then you don't move forward.
Sounds pretty contingent.
Okay, I guess what I'm saying is the funding's not contingent on the third, third part. The third part just falls by the wayside if you don't get the predicate.
Okay, right.
Approval.
All right, that I can agree with. I did not want to agree.
I think that's very important and I'm sure the people on the other side of this learning cottages contract want that clarified as well, that. The each.
It's a non, it's a, it's a non-starter for them because they might as well just wait two weeks.
Right.
Because it's, you can't act on an if then or contingent.
Correct.
Okay. All right, then I'll second that. So I have a motion. Well, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of. I just, no, no, I don't want to repeat it, please. And, uh, I just want to vote.
Sir, Madam Chair.
Mr. Black, do you want to repeat?
What?
Do you want to make the motion?
I just, I'm, I moved exactly what, um, I'm moving exactly what Mr. McKenzie just said.
Mr. McKenzie, repeat one more time for the, everybody listening.
Sir, so I'm, I'm just going to do the bridge version.
Thank you.
Uh, but part one, appropriate a little over nine hundred thousand from the. Nine ninety-four, six oh seven, from twenty twenty-four to this year's. Three oh four fund for the learning cottages, part one. Part two, add Madison to the services RFP. Part three, expand Bowling Green Elementary as the, with four, two, six classrooms and a gym. If approved by the bore, board at their next meeting. And to be clear, those are, uh, I'm at the school board's next meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Roll call, motion to move forward, call Mr. Black.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Forehand.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Nay.
Mr. Underwood.
I vote nay as well.
Motion carries by one, don't disappoint us.
Four, it was forty-two.
So we have ten C is the funding request from, um.
The traveling girls team.
Yeah, the, um, uh, name is loaded, Team Loaded Foundation.
Loaded.
According to Jennifer, she looked up, we had given them a thousand, I think in twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. So total of five thousand so far has been appropriated to fund their travel in the summer.
And it's a, I checked it.
Yeah, yeah, we've given them money.
There are five oh one, see three.
Yes, there, it's a, I, it's a, I, and I checked with the IRS during the meeting and it's still registered. The, it's called, um, Team Loaded Foundation.
Right. Would the board consider twenty-five hundred? I know costs have gone up a little. Two thousand, two?
School board said that, split it with us.
Well, they should get some contribution from the school board, but. All right, two, Reggie?
Yep.
Okay, make a motion to give them, uh, two thousand dollars, which is what we did before.
Second.
Twenty-five hundred should be, all right, call the question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Next.
Got appointments. You got to go back to the top of the agenda. We got, um, appointments and consent. And I, I think there's a presentation, but Mr. Colley said that that can be done at a different meeting.
All right, so for appointments, so anybody have any appointments for the. Uh, well, I have one for the Rappahannock Area Alcohol Safety Action Program Board. I'd like to nominate Major Travis Nutter.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh. Mr. Forehand, on the recreational advisory committee. I spoke with the, uh, with Mr. Howard and he'd sort of like to rework that and maybe meet with you. But right now of all the members, he only has one that was interested in continuing and he has some ideas. So would you be interested in talking to him?
Absolutely.
All right. So we're going to pass on that one if that's all right with the board.
What's that? What are we passing on?
The rep, the recreation advisory committee.
Can I just, can I just ask one favor of the recreational advisory committee?
Yes.
Um, is it possible that when we do that, I think people have been frustrated in the past. I think there needs to be, um, uh, we need to have set times and we need to continuously meet. Um, that there's a set meeting timeframe. Um, I don't know if they do every two months or something like that, but on the first Monday or whatever the case may be and that the, we consistently have the meetings.
Yes, uh, Mr. Howard did ask if they could, uh, he can meet with Mr. Forehand. He has some ideas with, for rearranging that, that committee.
Okay.
So they can either bring it back to us or.
Okay.
Presentation. Thank you, Mr. Black. Um, Rappahannock Area Community Services Board.
Madam Chair, uh, it has been confirmed that, uh, Melissa White is willing to serve another term if the board so wishes.
So moved.
The motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, we reappoint Captain Ed Bonham.
Second, that's for the rap, uh, Rappahannock.
Yeah, Emergency Medical Services. Yeah, Emergency Medical Services.
All right, have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Everybody okay with, uh, the A, B, D, and E on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. I've got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. All right, it's late, but are there any public comments?
Well, as a, uh, as an aside from two, we consent agenda, are, are we in fact reworking our county seal? Is that what I heard earlier?
Oh goodness, I forgot about that.
Doesn't have data, okay. All right, that answers that.
But yes, we are going, going to. Do we need a motion to change the seal, to correct the date on the seal?
Yeah, I think.
Part of the consent agenda recommended motion was to authorize changing the seal, so you, you've done that via approving the consent agenda?
No, that was, that was B, consent agenda item B. You guys, um, you've already done a public comment, and so we're, now we're back down to eleven informational calendar, closing board comments, closed meeting.
All right, Mr. Colley, you want to do informational calendar before we go in close meetings, everybody can go home, especially our staff?
Our next regular board meeting is, uh, six o'clock, June tenth. Um, there's a June, uh, teen celebration at the main rec park, we confirmed this on the fourteenth, that's a Saturday, so it's not on, uh, Juneteenth. Um, we have a, uh, Baker Region Seven meeting in King George, I forgot the name of the facility, but it's, uh, uh, at one o'clock.
Yeah, it's the, yeah, I forget the name, it was just the plantation right there, yeah, right across the bridge.
And, no, it's further up than that.
Okay.
I thought it was that one, but I looked it up, it's further up, you kind of go through the hop yard, come out on, it's off of three on the other side. But, um, that's on the sixteenth, one o'clock in the afternoon, for anybody that would like to attend. Um, the county fair starts on the eighteenth and runs through the twenty-first. Offices are actually closed for the holiday of Juneteenth on the nineteenth, um, right in the middle of that fair time, so that's pretty much what we have for June. And as always, we've included some other information, you know, planning calendar, that stuff, what other? Have y'all?
Very good, all right.
Any thought on a budget work session? Wasn't a whole lot of public comment on it one way or the other, but anyway, we'll be back Juneteenth, uh, June tenth, um, for adoption. And if you decide you don't want to do that, we, like I said, it can go all the way to the thirtieth, but we'd have to call a special meeting.
All right, uh, let's go ahead and do closing board comments, and then we can go into, uh, closed meeting. Mr. Black?
Yeah, um, I, I think, I know maybe Mr. Sealy disagrees with this, but I, I think what we did tonight, and we had some major disagreements among ourselves and um, with the school board and so forth, but, um, I'm hoping that we have solved a lot of issues dealing with growth in, uh, our school system for quite a while, with, um, bringing a gymnasium and classrooms to Bowling Green, um, and Madison, as well as focusing down the road on a new school, so I'm hoping we can kind of move forward, um, as one Caroline, I guess, to, um, talk to the citizens, saying, we, we've got a plan, we're moving forward. Um, and then the second thing is just, um, I will not be here on the tenth, but I will be able to call in, Madam Chair, so, um, I just want to let you know, I'll have to do it, um, virtually.
Thank you for the heads up, I'm sure David appreciates it.
That, that's it.
Mr. Thomas?
I did have one, Mr. Colley. If I could, uh, ask you, as we approach the budget work sessions or whatever, I believe it's the desire of the board to increase funding for the Thurman Brisbane homeless shelter. If you could increase that from twenty-five to forty thousand, it would be greatly appreciated.
Anything else, the SPCA, that's never been funded before?
We have a local SPCA that does a good bit of work, that raises a good bit of money as well.
They had requested, they had requested funds at, uh, a couple of years ago, Jennifer Pound, but that, not recently.
What are they asking for money?
They didn't, they asked for seven thousand a night, but they didn't, they didn't ask that we could find since a couple of years ago. But it's never been funded, there's four or five agencies that ask every year, sometimes as many as ten outside agencies come in asking for money that we haven't historically funded, and I don't put it in, because that, that continues to grow, um, but anyway.
We have a pretty active humane society in Carolina, and I think they all sort of work together, and I feel like, oh, the members in Carolina would let us know if there was a, a real, you know, crushing issue that they needed funds for, we could always bring it back up again.
Okay, and forty thousand for Thurman Brisbane, somebody's writing that down to help me get that in.
From, from, from twenty-five to forty. And they, they, they have, I think his reports that there was twenty-two schoolchildren from Carolina in the homeless shelter in Fredericksburg. So whatever we can do to help them, and, and I don't know if the economy is going to get better or worse, but indications are, things are not going to get better quick enough, so, there may be more.
I can certainly do that.
Anyone else?
Um, just a reminder that the, um, well, it's after our next meeting, but make plans to join the Agriculture Fair, the eighteenth through the twenty-first, that's a Wednesday through Saturday. It's free, and live entertainment, and all sorts of stuff to see and do, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand, um, I want to thank everybody for hanging with us tonight, um, uh, drive home carefully, and we will, so, see you again on the tenth, at six P M. for our next meeting. Uh, make sure you get anything you need on the agenda into, uh, Pam, uh, so that they, uh, we can get prepared for everything. Mr. Black, let us know if you hear anything from Aqua.
Oh, I will. I will, besides the rate increase from you, right? That's the only time we ever hear from them.
That's one thing you hear from them all the time.
Yep.
And, uh, that's all I have. Mr. Sealy?
I have nothing.
Mr. Underwood?
Madam Chair, I have nothing.
May I have a motion to, um, adjourn to closed meeting?
I move that this board convene in closed meeting pursuant to legal counsel, real estate, and contract exemptions of section two point two dash three seven one one A eight and A twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia. For consultation with the county attorney and discussion with staff regarding terms of a performance agreement, incentive agreement, relating to a development project in the Mattapanah District, and an agreement to sell county-owned property where such discussion and open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county. Can I get a second?
Second.
And a vote, Ms. Chair?
Mr. Mr., uh, who said aye? Chris Black said this, this.
Camille, Camille brought them.
Okay.
So good, we are in closed session.
Do I have a second to come out and close session?
Second.
All right.
I move that Cameron County Board of Supervisors certified that to the best of each board member's knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters that were identified in the motion commending the closed session in the first place were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. And can I get a second with that? And what? Sorry.
Mr. Black, do you say certify?
I so certify. And I so certify.
I so certify.
I so certify.
And I so certify.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, go home.
Aye.
Aye.
We are, we are finished. Thank you, everyone. We are finished. Thank you, everyone.